No video. No video, okay. Well, good morning. Welcome to Glendale City Council's Special Voting Meeting and Budget Workshop of April 2nd, 2024. Meeting is called to order. Roll call is not necessary because everybody that's currently on the council is here. You could take notes of that. Next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. If I could get a motion to go into executive session, please.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from the vice member, going to executive session. Any discussion, hearing, or no favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your ayes have it. Do have it. Council meeting is recessed for exec.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey.
Consideration and action to direct the city attorney regarding the process the city will utilize to fill the council vacancy in accordance with the legal advice provided in executive session.
Mayor and council, as you all know, there is a vacancy in the Ocatillo district and pursuant to the Glendale city charter provides that the council by a majority of vote of its remaining members shall fill the vacancies in its own membership and in the office of mayor for the unexpired terms. What we're speaking about today is the Ocatillo district with a term that expires in 2026, noting that the qualifications to be a council member in the Ocatillo district remain the same as if the individual was going through an election. So as this process moves forward, they will need to remain qualified as if they were running in a, in an election. Noting the staff would like to offer the recommendation to the council that we will immediately post a notice that there is a vacancy in the Ocatillo district and that we will be accepting applications for individuals who are interested in filling that vacancy. The due date that will be required for submission of those applications will be April 8th. The application shall include things including the name, address, the qualifications to serve the residents of the Ocatillo district, why they believe they are qualified to serve the Ocatillo district, and any additional information that the individual would find appropriate. With regards to the information that they provide as they believe they are qualified, we would request that it would be 500 words or less. Note that this is going to be included in the application as well. I'm just telling you this so that you're well aware of it. We'll be posting on the website, we'll be issuing a press release, we'll be notifying the newspapers, and we'll be posting on Twitter, Facebook, etc. Staff then would recommend that the initial review of the applications by the council would be April 9th, and at that time the council can take the number of applicants and create a finalist list and then have a meeting on April 12th, anticipated to be at 10:00 a.m. with the finalists where the council can then interview the candidates and also provide the council, or if the council so wishes, have the finalists provide a statement to the public. That is the proposed process that we staff are proposing, and if the council is in agreement with that, I would ask that you move to direct the city attorney to act in that manner. Thank you.
Have I got a motion?
May I so move?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
No.
Hearing none? Do we need a roll call vote on this, or no? All in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed vote nay. Here's guys have it, do have it. Motion does carry. Very good. Item number one, please.
Fiscal year 2024-25 budget workshop.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. We want to thank you for, again, for your commitment of time as we kick off more of the formal part of our budget process today. But I say formal only because as we craft the budget proposal for your consideration, it's really not just the last couple of months that we've thought about this. What we do is throughout the course of the entire year, we listen to council dialogue, council priorities. It could be through a council having special interests, could be through other actions taken, and we do our best to try to always incorporate those directions provided by the council into this budget. So I want to give you some budget notes to which how we based and founded our budget proposal for your consideration. First and of course foremost is that this is reflective of no increase in the city's levy rate for our property taxes. Again, this has been a priority of the council. This will be, I believe, the ninth year, at least that I'm familiar with, that the city has not increased its levy rate. I'm not sure there's another city in the valley that can make that same statement, but our budget was based on direction from the council that we will have no property tax increase. Additionally, we don't, we're not proposing any significant fee increases as well to balance our budget. As always, we've taken a very conservative approach to our budget. It's one of the really kind of, I think, ingrained in the culture of our budget and finance team and ingrained here in the city of Glendale is that we, we really come in with very conservative forecasts for revenue, and we come in very conservative with our forecast for expenditures. And every year since I've been here, we have always exceeded our revenue, and we've always spent less than what we budgeted for. This budget is still very similar to that and does not vary from that approach. The only organizational change that I am proposing is based on best practices. We are going to create the Department of Emergency Management. Prior, it had been embedded within the fire department, but emergency management involves so many different elements of the city, from technology to public works to law enforcement to fire, and so we, it is proposed that we've created a new Department of Emergency Management. And again, this is best practice, and I think consistent with the fact that as a major player in the region for, for large events, there's a lot, there's a lot to this recommendation, and we think it makes a lot of sense. I want to, I want to highlight some of the impacts that really go towards our employees that are here. And first, just out of curiosity, what I did is I went back and looked at our budget from 15 years ago. And in 15 years ago, the city council had approved in its budget, operating budget, 2,204 and a half employees in the budget. And this is 15 years ago. Since that time, our population has increased by almost 10%. Today, the budget that we're, that we're proposing has only 2,018 and a half spaces. So a really good way to say this is even though our population has grown by 10%, we're, we're still providing the services to our citizens with about 8% less employees. And, and so again, compliments to our 2,000 employees who work very hard, who've worked very hard to find more efficient ways to do things, because not only are we doing the work for our citizens with less FTEs, if you think about all the regulatory elements that we do today that we didn't have to do 15 years ago. So we have a lot, a lot of new services that we provide, and again, I think this is reflective of how good our 2,000 employees are here. You know, this budget will, is reflective of the MOUs that we've negotiated for the, both the police and fire department. We, as you know, we have two-year agreements. They're aligned in the same cycle. We started late, or middle of fourth quarter of last year, we're able to reach concurrence on MOU, and so everything in our proposed budget incorporates any of the cost components of the MOU will be reflected in there. We, we continue to invest in our employees, and based on council direction from prior years, is the council wanted to certainly recognize the cost of living increases that we see, but you also were very specific that you wanted to see performance pay based on meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. So again, this budget takes the same approach, in that we'll be proposing a COLA increase of three and a half percent, and then up to another three and a half percent for those employees who either meet expectation or exceed expectation. Something again, different than from seven or eight years ago, every employee receives a performance evaluation for every single employee here in the organization, and then we base their next compensation on that area. We've also just, this is a minor element, but we provided a small stipend for all of our directors. As you know, we are spread out now because of the downtown campus reinvestment project. We're spread throughout the city, which is requiring people to drive and use their car to move to different meetings, and so there is a small stipend that we'll have in place until we are able to relocate back into the city hall. Obviously, we're all impacted by inflation. Our citizens are certainly seeing, feeling that pinch, but we're not immune to it as well here in the, in the city. And so we're seeing a significant rise in cost for both services and goods that we rely on here in the city of Glendale. And so the, to get to our balanced budget, we are proposing an increase to our total operating budget of all funds. Again, that's important, it's all funds. The increase is 73 and a half million dollars. Now, 46% of that increase is directly related to contractual increases the city has experienced with our vendors and firms that we use. And there, there are things like we've seen significant increases on our insurance costs, things like water chemical costs have gone up significantly over the past year, and, and we were seeing utility increases that we have to pay for power rates and things that we have to buy in the open market. The public safety continues to be a priority of this council, and so our, this budget proposal reflects your priority to make sure that we continue to provide outstanding public safety services here in the city of Glendale. So let me walk you through a couple of the things that we've focused on. First and foremost, we, it really starts with making strategic investments in our safety equipment, our materials, and our technology. And all three of those play a significant role in terms of how we provide public safety. As the council knows, you prioritize investment in the real-time crime center. So that's an example of how we've taken technology and made additional investments in technology to leverage the real-time crime center. Second area this starts to be reflected is actually in personnel. And so this, this budget proposal includes the cops grants, which will add 13 positions, I believe it is, into the, the budget. The council is aware of this because you did approve last fall, you approved the receipt, the receipt of the, the cops grants, so this budget reflects those new positions. But we're also able to, and with this, with this new positions, we're able to create three new additional squads for our police department. And we're very excited about this because a lot of, and I wouldn't say a lot, I would say most police departments in the region and in the country are struggling to maintain even minimum staffing levels, and not only are we doing very well in terms of our retention and recruitment, we're now in a position of adding additional positions into our, into our budget. You're going to see an increase into our forensic, forensic staff. This allow us to provide a higher level of service to our citizens. Our police department know that we have highly qualified officers, but they have sometimes do more rudimentary, fundamental kinds of things like take accident reports. So this budget is allowing us with these forensic positions, is that if we're doing a, an investigation on something, we can bring a civilian forensic team in place and then get our patrol officers back into active patrol without going through and taking down a lot of the reports. And so this budget does reflect an investment in the, in our forensic positions that are there. We've also are going to continue to use a tool where we are contracting inspectors. We're still seeing very robust construction growth here in the city of Glendale. While we're seeing slowdowns in other parts of the region, we continue to be, you know, pedaled to the metal with our staff, and so rather than to put a, a large increase of permanent staff, this budget reflects the use of, of resources to high, to hire contractual people to help us with the inspection. Finally, we're also adding additional fire captain. This was negotiated as part of the MOU, and we believe that additional fire captain will help with our operations and will, will prove to be beneficial both financially and operationally for the department. In terms of other things, we're still being very business focused, still trying to get speed to the market. This has been one of our hallmarks here in Glendale. It's something we are well respected for by the development community, and we want to make sure that this budget continues to put a priority on that. We're still continuing to, we have money in the budget for the rewrite of the general plan, which we'll have a lot more to talk about this when we have this presentation. And of course, we're continuing still to implement and rewrite to make final changes to the UDC. Lastly, even with the amount of growth, and I did mention already the, the inspectors in terms of having money for additional inspectors that are there. Now let's talk about parks and neighborhoods, because these are additional priorities of the council. And with our ARPA funds that have been, that are sunsetting now, we are transitioning park staff that were brought onboard using ARPA funds are now being embedded in the, in the correct general fund, and so that shifting is taking place in this budget. So we, we were able to hire in our community centers, permanent Glendale staffing rather than using outside vendors. They were funded with ARPA dollars. Those monies now are sunsetting. This budget reflects keeping those positions but making them part of the general fund. We're keeping things like the, the front yard landscaping program that the council prioritized, I believe, in our last budget. That, that has continued to be reflected here as well. And while it's not a large number, we are putting money in the budget for the plaque recognition program. We just recently had a council having a special interest to talk about the ability for the council to recognize certain historic and significant buildings in the city, and so we do have money in that budget. Lastly, innovation and technology. This is something that continues to be a, I guess what I would say to our citizens and to the council, it's not a very sexy part of our budget, but it is a critical part of our budget. And we have a tremendous IT team that has done, I just think fantastic work to keep this, our system safe, because we are under constant attack by people trying to get into our systems to do, to do harm. And so the, we have money in here to allow us to continue to invest in technology-driven projects, but what we've done is we put money aside to hire outside project managers rather than to put in permanent staffing. We recognize that in many of our larger software lifts that we're doing, that we just need to have it project manage, and then once it's implemented, we don't need that project manager. And so this budget reflects still a, a resource to be able to bring in IT support through contracted services on the outside. And so with that, that is kind of how we've based this budget. I'm now going to turn this over to our team. It'll, I'll turn over to Mr. Gibson, who will be, I think, running this off, but he's also, of course, we have Amy Lindsay and Jonathan Hill, and then assistant city managers, Rios and Meta will be here as well.
Council member Tomachoff has a question.
I did have a question from the city manager's presentation before we move on, if I could, Mayor. Two questions. Mr. Phelps, the, how, I, you briefly touched on the emergency management department. Is that going to be, could you give us a little bit more information? It's going to be with a new director, a completely new department? Is that going to still be under Deputy City Manager, Mr. St. John? Just, I'd like a little bit more information on that.
We, we have a presentation by the Department of Emergency Management, correct? I believe it, is it tomorrow or is it today?
Today.
It is today. So they can walk you through kind of the organizational structure for that.
Okay, so we're going to get a new org chart also then to show?
We would update, you know, based on the approval of the budget, we would be updating the organization.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one other question. You touched on the 73 and a half million dollar increase and accounted for 46%, 33 and a half million of the 73 million. What is the additional 40, just, I mean, briefly, is it attributed to more FTEs, or how much of that is FTEs? Is it just overall spending increase? I was a little surprised by that, noting the, in fiscal year, well, January 2025, the residential rental tax stops. the residential rental tax stops, we stopped getting that. So if you could just give me a thirty thousand foot level of what, what is the other forty million attributed to?
It certainly does reflect the, the requested increase in FTEs. I don't know, maybe that might be something that you, maybe somebody in our budget team can kind of give a better high level of all the things that are embedded in that additional increase.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Phelps. We'll answer that question by going to, part of that question by going to the next slide, Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff. And I'll turn part of this presentation over to Mr. Hill, our budget administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is this getting you out of sequence or is this where you was going to start?
Mayor, I think this is a, a good point to start.
Perfect.
That's perfect segue into the next slide. So, good morning, Mayor and Council. So this slide, slide thirteen, this helps answer hopefully Councilmember Tomachoff's question. Also references back to slide six, when Mr. Phelps mentions the MOU, Classification and Comp Study, and the COLA and merit. So as you can see, eight point eight million of the salary impact across all funds, total twenty-four million, is of the MOU increases. Six point seven million is due to COLA and merit. And then about five million is a classification and compensation study. And then the forty-eight new FTEs that are being requested, the total for that is three point seven million.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I, I, this, I don't know who's going to answer this, but we're talking about a seventy-three million dollar increase in the budget year over year. What revenues, we know we're losing fourteen million from the rental tax. What revenues are increasing to compensate for that seventy-three million dollar increase?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark. As part of the, the process, we will be bringing back the general fund forecast on April sixteenth to show you what those assumptions are with regards to revenue. Certainly part of those assumptions are related to VI and the increase in sales tax or TPT tax from Vi Resort. But we'll be bringing back that forecast on April sixteenth to show you how that, those numbers help us balance the, this budget.
Follow-up question, Mayor, thank you. I, I know that VI will be very impactful when it opens, but I believe it won't open until twenty-twenty-five at this point. So are you taking that assumption into consideration when you project revenues from VI?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, that's correct. So we assumed that they wouldn't open until twenty-twenty-five. And we essentially took a conservative view of what they would be able to do within that first year. Using the economic forecast that was provided to council previously, we essentially discounted that under a conservative methodology so that we would not overestimate the revenue that would be coming in from VI.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So that, for once I had good timing. The, the twenty-four point two million dollars offers a good explanation, but there's still another little over sixteen million. So is it safe to assume that's just overall spending citywide? Or is there a couple of notable items where we would be able to find that extra sixteen million dollars in the increase?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff. Yes, the additional sixteen million is a request from the departments. And you'll hear about those requests through their departmental presentations as we go through the presentation.
So the, Mayor, if I could, so the sixteen million will be accounted for in supplemental request?
Correct.
And they'll be noting that, we'll be able to add that up and that'll, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The public safety MOUs, the Memorandums of Understanding have been referenced twice this morning. I haven't seen a copy of them. Are we going to be getting copies and how soon?
The last I, Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Turner, will certainly get it completed. I think they were still working on language last time, the, the, kind of the technical language. The deal points of it have been pretty well outlined, but Mr. St. John may be able to provide updated information.
Mayor, Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember Turner, we should have signed MOUs within the next two to three weeks, I would guess.
So not for the next two or three weeks, we won't see them?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that's correct, yes.
Okay, well, I would just say that these MOUs drive a big part of our budget. And, and we in the public need to know what is being, you know, what's in them for transparency sake. And then on that same point, I noticed that on slide six, we do indicate that for the non-represented, the non-MOU employees, we're anticipating a three and a half percent cost of living adjustment and up to another three and a half percent in merit increases. Can you tell us what we're anticipating for public safety in the MOUs?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to ask a question about non-represented. In the MOUs, I believe it is an eight percent increase for firefighters, sixteen and a half percent increase for engineers, eleven percent for captains, and then on the police side of the house, it's ten percent represented.
Thanks for that information. Thank you, Mayor.
One more?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelps, you referred merit increases and you used the phraseology, meet expectations or exceed expectations. I would think that if you meet expectations, you're doing your job. And I would think that merit should be directed to those who exceed expectations. Can you further explain why meeting expectations is adequate enough to provide merit increases?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilmember Clark, again, this is, you know, we've had a lot of discussion with the council over the years in terms of how we've broken it up. So we, we could have justified maybe just an exceed expectation. We would, it would have been reflected most, more than likely with a higher COLA increase to get there. So we recognize that the vast majority of our employees will meet expectations, but not all do. And so it gives us an opportunity to write out a performance plan to get those that aren't meeting expectation to get to that level. The exceeding then is just the, kind of the additional component. And again, these, this is the way we've been doing it the last several years. And when we, I, we can certainly provide you some additional information on how that breaks out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had this discussion before, I just want to make sure I understand. So anybody meeting expectations gets the full three and a half percent merit increase? Or, or just a sliding scale for meeting is whatever, two, two and a half, and exceeding is three and a half? How does that work?
Yeah, Mayor, Members of the Council, I'll have Assistant City Manager Rios give you update on that.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the Council. So meeting expectations in this case would be the three and a half COLA plus two and a half for merit. And then the other exceeding expectations is another one percent. So if you exceed expectations, you'd be at seven, otherwise you'd be at six. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing with the summary of the FTEs, this is broken out by each individual fund. So as you can see, the general fund requesting thirty-seven new positions. I'll highlight some of those, a couple for budget and finance. As previously mentioned, the city attorney's office is requesting a Assistant City Prosecutor. Police Department is sixteen new for general fund. And then a couple new FTEs for HR. Our special revenue fund is that forensic specialist, that's grant-funded. And we have six total for enterprise fund, five for community services, and one is for landfill. And then internal services is three for IT and then one for fleet. So the total is forty-eight. This slide shows the entire fiscal year twenty-five budget, split out, split out by each fund. The total proposed operating budget is six hundred and sixty-eight point six million. The general fund takes up the majority of the budget with three hundred and nineteen million dollars, or forty-eight percent, followed by the enterprise fund at a hundred and forty-four million dollars of the operating budget. And the remaining thirty percent of the operating budget is internal service funds, special revenue funds, and our vehicle replacement fund. This chart is just broken up by general fund. The general fund portion of the proposed budget is three hundred and nineteen million. As you can see, public safety composes sixty-four percent of our general fund operating budget, with police at a hundred and thirty-four million dollars and fire at seventy million dollars, followed by other departments, which is budget and finance, development services, econ dev, communications, among others. And then we have public works.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you. I want to ask a question directly related to this. Police and fire comprise sixty-four percent of the entire budget. Has that number increased or decreased year over year from last year, the percentage?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Clark. So year over year, the percentage between the twenty-twenty-three, the current year that we're in, and the subsequent year, which we're proposing the budget for, it's the same, it's sixty-four percent. So it stayed the same.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I'll walk you through what we have in the binders I were giving to you last week. The first tab is FTE schedule. This starts off with the twenty-four adopted FTEs, followed by the requested changes for twenty-five, and then the total FTE count for twenty, for twenty-five. I believe on page seventeen shows you the total for our FY twenty-four, the requested FTEs, and then also the total, if approved, FTE count for FY twenty-five. The next tab is approved supplements. These list all the supplement that's being recommended today, separated by fund. And on page twenty-eight has a total of all those requested supplementals. And then beginning on twenty-nine is the department's requested supplementals.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember?
Thank you. I went over those supplementals that were not recommended, and there are three that I would like to hear more about and perhaps include in the budget. The first one is in the communications department. They were denied a recommended six thousand dollars for podcasts. The amount is not large when you look at the overall budget. None of the, two of them are not very large. And podcasts are normal these days. Everybody has a podcast in the world. I would think for six thousand dollars, council would consider approving the communications department ability to generate podcasts on behalf of the city. So that is one supplemental that I'd like us to consider. The second supplemental is with regard to Parks and Recreation Department. They were denied a supplemental of three thousand dollars for the annual maintenance of retention basins. And I think this is a critical element in terms of the way that our city looks and should be included in this budget. The net third and last supplemental that I would like us to consider are the use of flock cameras for a line item of fifty-four thousand dollars by the police department. I know that staff is currently looking at policy with regard to the use of flock cameras. So I would not expect this expenditure to occur immediately, but I would think sometime during the year it would occur. And, and the reason why I am so supportive of flock cameras is that they are quite different from usual license plate reader cameras in that they offer enhanced service. For example, if you do not have the license plate number of a vehicle, with a flock camera, you can enter data that gives a description of the vehicle. Maybe it's a white vehicle with a dented front door or a dented bumper or whatever. You can plug that into the flock program and it will generate a report of all of those vehicles in your area that meet that description. And that is far enhanced over normal license plate readers. And I think when we talk about the embrace of technology, one of the things that I, statistics that I read was that ninety-seven percent of those people who are stopped for traffic violations are typically those people who go on to commit other crimes. So the use of technology to identify people with traffic violations, it has been proven in other cities, and I didn't bring the statistics with me because it would be too long, where they have reduced the incidence of crime in various categories through the use of flock cameras. So I, I would like council to consider podcasts for six thousand, annual maintenance of retention basins for three thousand, and the use of two, eventually sometime this fiscal year, the city purchase of two flock cameras for fifty-four thousand. The total comes to sixty-three thousand. And in terms of a million dollar, seventy-three million dollar budget, that's not a lot of money. And I would think we would be able to find the resources to cover that sixty-three thousand. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Rios.
Mayor, Members of the Council. One of the things, I can't speak for every department, but one of the things that you'll look at or you can see when you look at especially the supplementals that were said no to, is that the departments indicated after consideration that they could either absorb that amount in their current budget because of the other additions that we were making. So for example, on parks, we just asked them to, it is a small amount, three thousand dollars. So we asked that with the other changes that we were making, if they could absorb that. And I believe in the case of the cameras, we're able to fund those this year. And so the police department had a number of items that after looking at it, because of some savings that they have this year, they'll be able to procure those this year to put them into use next year. I would suggest on these kinds of things though, that it'd be easier if we wait until we have the police chief up here, for example, and we can ask him those questions. Because as we go through the presentations, they'll be up here to answer more detailed questions like that for you.
If I could follow up. So from what I just heard you say, these are the things that I identified, the three things that I identified are being funded through different mechanisms within each department? Is that what I heard?
Mayor, Members of the Council, that's correct. That's what my understanding is.
Okay, and I can confirm that when the various departments come up?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm, there is no total of supplementals approved, but as you answered my earlier question, if I was to add all of those up, that would be about sixteen million dollars?
Mayor, Members of the Council, we can get you an additional breakdown if you'd like, but one thing I would like to mention that wasn't said, when we had the salaries there, that is salaries only, that doesn't include benefits. So for that twenty-four million in salaries, we also have to add on top of that retirement, FICA, and those things. So that creates an increase. And then in addition to that, there are other supplementals. So we can break that seventy-three million down further if you'd like. I don't have the breakdown of that. I did just want to mention that the twenty-four million you saw in salaries doesn't include benefits. So in addition to the twenty-four million, there's, there is more cost to that because it, we have to add benefits on top of that. So that's part of that sixteen million is benefits as well.
So, Mayor, if I could, the eight point eight million dollars for the MOU increases for public safety does not include any public safety benefits? That number does not include any of their benefits? Retire, you know, PS, all the retirement contributions and everything?
Mayor, Members of the Council, that's correct.
I'd like to have that full, fully loaded number for all of those, please, at some point during this presentation. Not today, but I mean before we finalize, thank you.
We can certainly get that for you.
Okay, continuing with the, the binder. As Councilmember Clark mentioned, the following tab was the not recommended. As, as Ms. Rios mentioned, some of those items were absorbed through the budget or repurchase with savings this year. The next tab is the summary by fund. This lists This lists all the changes from fiscal year twenty-four through twenty-five listed out, uh, by the separate funds. And the backside of that is, uh, for each department, the change of their department budget. Oh, looks like I skipped one. The change document tab. That's similar to what you'll see in the presentation today. It's a change of the department budgets from fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five, and the departments will, we'll be reviewing those today. The, the remaining tab, oh, go ahead.
Mayor, I do have another general question. I noted that, um, while not every department, certainly a preponderance of the departments, saw a decrease in internal premiums. Um, could you explain why the decrease?
Mayor, member of the council, Councilmember Clark. Um, the reason for that is we had some fund balance that had built up in the technology fund. And so, rather than increase the operating budget by the increases that we were going to do through the internal charge process, uh, we were able to keep that internal charge flat this year and absorb the fund balance that's in the technology fund. So, that's why you show it, it actually shows a decrease in the internal charges for most of the departments.
Thank you.
And then the remaining tabs of the binder are the specific operating budgets, uh, by each department. And with that, uh, well, if there's any other general questions, if not, we'll head it over to, uh, City Court.
I'm joined this morning by Lynn Brown, our court administrator, who was instrumental in putting together the budget for this year. Again, good morning, Mayor and council. It's my privilege this morning to present the proposed budget for the Glendale City Court for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Our court's mission is to provide a forum for prompt, fair, and just resolution of cases in a professional, efficient, and courteous manner. Our aim is to improve access to justice. Our primary goal has been to continuously provide excellent customer service in compliance with the law, applicable rules, and standards, while increasing efficiency and being fiscally responsible. This year, we're happy to report that we successfully completed the renovation of our courthouse. We've made it safer, more efficient, and more welcoming for customers and staff. Our second goal is to implement added technology that increases efficiency. And some examples include expanding virtual proceedings, um, and expanding the capability to conduct virtual proceedings in all of our courtrooms. This will better serve customers and move cases more quickly. We're also providing the capability for defendants to be fingerprinted when necessary in the courthouse. This results in time savings, not only for the court, but for the police and detention personnel as well, and it expedites sentencing proceedings. Further, we've developed improved docket displays that provide case informations for customers and staff, which helps, once again, with the, uh, efficient movement of cases. Now, with your permission, I'll take a minute to address the state of the court today and specifically address the court's request for your approval of our one budget supplement. Fiscal year twenty-four has been very productive, uh, for our court. We've added two new judges, replacement judges, to our bench. And we've also added experienced, talented, and to our leadership team. This year, we continued to improve our case clearance rate. We're working to achieve consistency and accountability. And to do this, we've implemented a vertical case management system. Cases are assigned to an individual judge for the adjudication of that case from the initial appearance through final disposition. Staff is also now organized into teams to support individual judges. This will improve efficiency and accountability. We continue to work on changing the culture of the court. We're emphasizing leadership, teamwork, professionalism, and attention to detail. Briefly, our accomplishments have been that we improved court security throughout the courthouse with the installation of an enhanced camera system and a more secure door lock and alarm system. Having established the Glendale Veterans Treatment Court in November of twenty-one, with your support, we expanded this year into a West Valley Regional Veterans Court. We invited ten West Valley municipalities to join us. And to date, El Mirage, Goodyear, Litchfield Park, Wickenburg, and Tolleson have all partnered with us. We're heading in the right direction. Now, if I may, I'm going to turn to the one supplemental requested. This year, the court requests a supplement in the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to cover the increased cost of public defender services. We've experienced an increase in the cost of public defenders for two reasons. Number one, Arizona Rules of Criminal Procedure, Rule six point one, was amended effective January first of twenty twenty-three. It expanded the right to counsel and requires the appointment of counsel when a defendant is held on a bond at the initial appearance. As a result, more attorney assignments are being made. Second, to ensure that we could retain valued attorneys and recruit new public defenders in an increasingly competitive market, the court was compelled to increase the public defender contract amount this year. In the end of this fiscal year, we were able to absorb that cost. But for the future, uh, we're going to require a supplement. The budget supplement requested today will cover the cost of the expanded need for public defenders, including the addition of additional public defender contracts, and also including the ongoing cost of existing public defender contracts that are being paid at an increased contract amount. Additional contracts will not only ensure that we could comply with the right to counsel, it will also enable the court to better manage in custody cases. Subject to your questions, this concludes my presentation. Thank you for your kind attention.
Anybody? Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. Um, the first, I noticed line item for professional services has increased by thirty point fifty-nine percent. What professional services are increasing?
A big part of that is, um, the contract that we have for interpreter services. That has increased significantly. We have, um, a staff interpreter in the Spanish language. We regularly, uh, go to a, um, contract person, uh, to fill in gaps. But beyond that, um, over the past several years, we've experienced interaction with individuals from different countries and different languages, um, and individuals with special needs that require interpreter services. Those services are expensive and a large part of, um, that budget line.
That's a good explanation. Thank you. Uh, if I might follow up, I have other questions. Uh, I notice, and there's, yeah, it's page twenty-one. Um, under your performance measures, warrants issued in twenty twenty-two were fifty-nine twenty-five. Here it is, three years later, and you're, for twenty twenty-five, you're projecting warrants issued of forty-two hundred. That, first of all, that's a dramatic decrease. But have you factored in the fact that we're getting new police officers that I would think would generate more of a work product? Um, so I'm curious why you're using a figure of forty-two hundred for warrants issued projected in twenty twenty-five?
That projection contemplates an expectation that people are going to appear when required more frequently. And they're doing that, we believe, in part because of vertical case management. So, when an individual is assigned to a judge, that individual sees that judge from beginning to end of case. In the past, that was not the practice. So, now, if you have an excuse for failing to appear, you tell it to a judge. If you fail to appear on a second occasion, you're facing the same judge. You can only use an excuse once. You can't use it multiple times. Um, what we've found is that our numbers are going down in terms of failures to appear, and our projection in the future is with this better system of accountability, um, it'll continue to go down.
Very good. It's very good. Um, I don't think I have any other questions right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure to be here.
Next up, we have Mr. Bailey with the City Attorney's Office.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Um, actually, I'll be really quick about this because then maybe I'll miss Councilmember Clark while she's out in the hall. So, if I have an expedited version, you now know why. With regard to the City Attorney's Office, um, as you all know, our role and our responsibility is to provide legal advice and guidance to the city council and to staff as a whole. Our goal is to provide the highest level of service while also trying to maintain the requirements related to our, uh, professional duties. From a practical standpoint, uh, our workload remains stable, and we don't anticipate any, uh, increase on the civil side. However, we do anticipate an increase on the criminal side. That's what I'll be talking to you because that is our request in terms of this year's budget. Apparently, thank you. Apparently, um, I should have requested a, um, a buzzer in the, um, budget that extended beyond twenty feet. Anyway, there's, um, from our, an operating budget, um, as you know, the salaries are the largest expense as it relates to professional services, noting that, um, our goal is to ensure success of the departments, uh, that we support. And again, it's one of the things that I reiterate with my staff is that we are a support function. We are not a driving function as it relates to the operations of the, of the city. So, our goal is to try and support the departments as much as we possibly can. Um, in terms of our objectives and performance measures, I think those are very straightforward. Um, I think the most important compelling element of it is that when you look at the performance measures related to the criminal matters and the number of police citations and submittals, that generally is what drives the workload with the prosecutor's office. As for our accomplishments, last year, we fully transitioned from a paper contract review system to an online review system. This is my opportunity. I get to thank Pharaohs and the IT department for that. Um, they are a support function, and we were probably a very difficult client, and they assisted us in attaining what our goals were, so thank you to the IT department. And then also, the prosecutor's office continues to maintain the annual Victims' Rights Grant, which is an audited grant, and, uh, we've had long-term success with that as well. With regards to our supplemental request, that is associated with the request of public safety related to the number of officers. I can tell you, we do not anticipate hiring this position immediately. Uh, we are asking for this to, uh, be prepared in the event. And when the, well, I say in the event, but we know that with the growth of three new squads, we anticipate the number of submittals will increase and the workload will increase. And this is why we have requested this position. And with that, I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Bailey, you requested two additional prosecutors and received approval for one. And, um, I know that part of the discussion surrounding, and I know we haven't gone, they haven't brought back an ordinance to us for, uh, consideration for repeat offenders of code and being able to move those through prosecution when necessary. Um, with that, and I believe that's what the additional prosecutor was for, um, I, would you, would that, would you say that that other, if we wanted to move that process ahead, that that other prosecutor would be necessary, the one that was not approved?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, not knowing what the system will entail, I think it would, it's, it may be premature to request that position at this time. However, I think what we've tried to accomplish here is a balance that we, we will be able to assign an attorney, uh, to handle some of that workload, as it relates to a multiple, kind of a repeat offender as it's relating to code enforcement. But that may actually, I think, the, the critical element is the FTE that we're getting, we don't anticipate hiring immediately. We may hire it sooner than later. And the reason why we would hire it sooner and later is actually for, for just that, for that multiple repeat offender program. But until we actually see what the program is comprised of, it, it may be premature.
Okay, um, the, Mayor, if I could, I'm a little confused because of the, the, you said that the, the prosecutor that, that's in your supplemental was, is in the, because as the police department ramps up patrol, we anticipate more arrests and more prosecutions. So, that's, is that, if I understood that correctly, that's what that's for? So, that would still leave us without an additional body. And I absolutely understand. I mean, I agree. I want our prosecutors to be able to prosecute crimes and criminals and those kinds of things. And code is, while it's important to the community, we have to prioritize, and they have to prioritize what they're spending their time doing. And I agree with spending their time prosecuting actual crimes. But I think that there was a consensus with the council to, to try to do better with code and actually prosecute the people who are repeat offenders and who refuse to comply. Um, and, you know, and not bring their property up to standards in Glendale. So, I'm just curious whether we should have a placeholder in the budget and not maybe just, uh, for that extra position? Should we, when that, it hasn't even come back to us. We haven't even had a first look at, at what an ordinance might look like and what this process might be. And that, whether we should just have a placeholder for the additional prosecutor here in the event that that's a piece of the puzzle that we feel is necessary. If we end up not needing it, then it's just a placeholder right now. But I, I just don't want to miss the opportunity to actually fully invest in, I think, what we're trying to do as far as code. So, um, I don't know how everybody, how you feel about that. But I understand the police department is hiring more patrol officers, and the idea is to catch more criminals and prosecute more criminals, and that's all good stuff. But we still want, I, and I believe the rest of my colleagues up here want to still move ahead with what we're trying to do with improving the ability to prosecute repeat offenders of, of code violations.
And, and Mayor and council, I, I, Councilmember Tomachoff, I appreciate that. One of the challenges that I'm faced with is, is that both the hiring of the, on the criminal side and then the increased activity related to criminal conduct in, in, in code enforcement is, we don't know what that workload really is going to be per se initially and long-term over the program. Um, we've taken steps already to accommodate some of that. But, um, I think, um, where we're at is in a good place. And, and to the extent that, you know, I can report back to the council in six months, and i- if need be, we can, we can address it at that point in time. But I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
So, I guess I'm not, still not understanding if we needed an additional body. Even, I mean, I don't know even know whether you could just contract somebody for that type of work and not actually have another person on staff. But if we don't have a placeholder in the budget, then you're going to have to find, find the money in your budget somewhere else if we realize that we need, you know, an additional twenty hours a week of a prosecutor to actually, you know, go through this, this process. process. So...
And to that point, Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember, is we do have an outside council budget, and historically, we've used some of that for contract employment as it's related to filling the gaps in our needs. And so that exists, which can be helpful. Again, it's, one unique element of this is that in terms of this program, once we establish it, we'll have a better understanding of what that entails and how we, as the Prosecutor's Office, will manage that in terms of attaining compliance or, or moving forward with a full criminal trial on the merits. And so we'll know more as that moves forward. And, and I know that seems speculative, but I think that's just a good place to be in at this point in time. So I'm comfortable with just the one position. I just want to make sure, I'm comfortable with that. It's just how we manage it. I may have to meander about on that throughout the year, including the fact using some outside council budget.
So Mayor, if I could, so you're, you're saying, you're assuring that we're going to be able to meet our, our objective without this additional prosecutor this, this coming fiscal year?
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the Council, I can maybe just add context. In the past, we have added a mid-year FTE in, so we'll work, in that case, when there need is identified, we'll look for where we can fund that, but it's not uncommon. So we'll make sure we work closely with the City Attorney's Office in terms of managing that caseload. And once we get the program more finalized, we can certainly come back, Councilmember Tomachoff, and, and look at adding a position in mid, we've done that before.
Okay. Thank you.
What's next?
Next up, we have the Mayor and Council's Office, and Ms. Hanlong will be presenting.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today, I'll be presenting the Mayor and Council Office budgets. I am not requesting any additional funding this year. The only thing you'll see that increased is the proposed salaries. So I'm here if you have any questions.
Mayor?
Question? You think? Go ahead.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have any questions, and I assume the rest of Council doesn't, because it's flat. There's no increases in anything. So there's nothing to question or to challenge, because it's the same as it's always been. Thank you.
Next. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had, I'd had heard some, that there were some discussions about, that the parade was actually going to be embedded in the city budget, because it does take some city resources, public safety, street, you know, sanitation, solid waste. I mean, people have to, you know, pick up the trash there. And I know the street sweeper, I've seen the street sweeper run on, on the Saturday after the parade, so it does consume some city resources. And I don't see it here, so is, is it, can we find it somewhere else in the budget? The parade? How that, how that's, that part of the city resources? And I'm not saying I object to it. I just believe that we need to be transparent exactly that there are city resources used for the parade, probably over time and other things. I mean, I don't know that the street sweeper runs anywhere else on a Saturday, and I know there's additional public safety personnel deployed to the downtown area on that day for, for good reason, but they are. And so I was just curious, and I had heard that there were some discussions about putting, putting that in the budget, but I was not able to find it, so...
I haven't had that discussion, so I'm not sure who had the discussion.
Where are the, are they just absorbed into general budget? Because I know that there are costs that the city covers for additional staffing and, you know, to, to manage the, the crowds and the trash and the things that are, that go along with the parade.
Mayor, members of the Council, we can ask that question of the Director of Economic Development when she makes her presentation. If we're, I would assume if we're adding in some additional costs that would come out of her, out of that budget.
Special, the special events budget?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor? Yeah, I, I concur with Councilmember Tomachoff on that, and if there are costs to the parade that are picked up out of other budgets, whether it's council office, mayor, or other departments, then we kind of do, I think, for transparency's sake, need to be able to show our residents what that event costs, just like we do other events that are city-supported. Thank you.
You up?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, members of the Council. I'm here to present the City Manager's Office budget. Like all the other budgets, it's largely personnel, very little in operating. What is in operating is probably mainly in the code compliance area. You can see that City Manager's Office is administration and code compliance. The performance metrics under the City Manager's Office are strictly for code. We had some performance measures in years past for the administrative side of the manager's office, but we decided this year, those are probably better discussed in the individual departments where those strategies actually sit, like organizational performance, for example, and the balanced scorecard. So you'll be hearing a lot about what we used to present as our performance measures from other departments. But on the code side of the House, our performance measures are the same as they've been over the last couple of years with the addition of percent of inspectors that have professional certification. This is part of our Tier Two Balanced Scorecard for code to get professional certifications for all of our code employees, so they're, they're better equipped and trained to handle the needs of our community. And our target for FY '25 is that 100% of our staffing has those professional certifications, and we're well on our way to that goal.
Mayor, regarding that, you had a supplemental for professional development that was not included in your budget. What, was that going to be one of those absorbed costs that you will be able to absorb?
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, that is correct.
Okay. And also, along with that supplemental that was denied, was printing services. Was that, what, was that printing services, like for flyers for the community? What was that for?
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, it is for, for educational materials and things like that, also for the mailing of notices of violation, particularly on abandoned properties when we have to send certified mail to the owner of record.
Okay. And is that $10,000 that was denied being absorbed elsewhere? Are you still going to be able to do that additional printing and notification?
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, we will be able to do everything that we need to do. And then if there is the need for a budget transfer in the fourth quarter because we didn't fund it properly, then we can do that in the fourth quarter next year.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, this is one item that I've asked for in the past, and I think other council members as well, is to make sure that our community is educated on what our code compliance regulations are. Thank you.
Some accomplishments over the last year with project leadership.
Hold on one second.
I can wait.
My apologies.
I can wait. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. So you had the, the $2,700, $2,800 for Clean &amp; Lean, and no additional, it says no ongoing. So is that, is there, is there going to be money in this year's budget for Clean &amp; Lean? And do you anticipate, if we bring forward this repeat offender ordinance, do you anticipate Clean &amp; Lean being needed to resolve the issues in the neighborhood and more funding needed for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, we do have a budget supplemental for $10,000 in addition to what already exists in the Clean &amp; Lean budget. So I, I don't remember the exact dollar amount that we have in Clean &amp; Lean right now. I think it's $50,000 or so. So this is a $10,000 increase to that line to allow us to do more on the Clean &amp; Lean front.
Okay. And then I will have a question about the $65,000 for the intern, but I, I don't know if I, should I wait for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, whenever you'd like to ask a question, I'm happy to answer.
Is an intern going to be a full-time employee? Generally, interns will work for, you know, very little, they're part-time, and I know we have IGAs, and they'll get, they should get credit also if they're college students, but that seems like a lot of money for an intern.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, it would be for two interns on a part-time basis, if I'm not mistaken. Up to 30 hours a week, I would say.
Do we have any, are we utilizing this intern? Because I know this is something that the Council has encouraged to utilize interns citywide. Are there, is there any funding for any interns anywhere else in the city other than the City Manager's Office?
I would have to defer that question to Budget and Finance.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, so currently in Budget and Finance, we have an intern using some professional service dollars. I call it a quasi-internship, because the internships through the City Manager's Office are conducted through ASU for college credit. The intern that we have in Budget and Finance is an intern who's interested in Budget and Finance but doesn't receive college credit. So we do have a part-time person who is helping us. I'm not aware of any others, but there may be others that utilize that same model within the city.
I would just say that I, I know that we've talked about this before, and I would encourage other departments to make, it's a good opportunity for you to get, you know, a, a person who's really eager to learn, identify possible future employees. They work relatively cheap. It's a win-win, really, and then they get to put that on their resume. So, I mean, I know we've had this discussion multiple times, and I know we had a couple of interns in the Council Office. I think the mayor's used an intern, but I haven't really seen the program used citywide, and I would encourage that we, we get more involved in that, because I think it's a win-win. It's a win for the city, and it's a win for the student. They get college credit, they get paid, and then they've got something to put on their resume. And, you know, you identify future people who are interested in working in, you know, in municipal government. So I would, I'm glad to see it. I'm not saying I'm not glad to see it. I just wish there was more of that. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the Council, so, so what you're seeing here is action increase. Last year, we funded through the ASU Masters of Public Administration program and the, a, a single position for an intern. Armando was who was assigned to us, and what we do, and we kind of wanted to get our feet wet with how we would utilize an intern, rather than to have him embedded in a single department, we actually laid out a schedule with him and with his professor that kind of got him through different departments. So he spent time in Budget and Finance, he spent time in the Legislature with Ryan Lee as part of the intergovernmental programs, and so he's kind of moved around. And so we were really happy with the, the work that he was able to do. And so we went back to ASU, and what we're now asking for in this supplemental is actually to double the amount, so we'll have two students all next year. And again, we'll continue to utilize them that manner is to, is to find out what departments could utilize additional resources, and then we'll make sure that, that, that those individuals are assigned along the way. So we're really happy with that program. It's actually a fairly low cost to get a high quality. I'll, just as a side note, Armando, two-thirds of the way through the year, found out that he was named Economic Development Director for a community here in Arizona that he lived in. And so when he completes his MPA, he'll actually transition right into a economic development position. So we're getting really high-quality individual students, and in talking with our departments, they, they found really good value. So we'll continue to monitor this, and anytime you'd like an update on, on what we're, how we're using them, just let us know.
Yeah. Mayor, if I could, I just, I'd like to see the program grow. We've got Grand Canyon University, we've got, there's, there's, there should, I think we've got plenty of opportunity, and it, like you said, it's a win for the city. We can identify either future employees here, maybe future employees in other cities, but I think it's a win-win. And I know we put the IGs in place several years ago. They've been IGAs with, because NAU's got, you know, they've got stakes in the ground down here also, so does U of A. So I, I would like to see the program grow. I think it's a really important thing for a city to be doing, and it, you know, they, like you said, we, we get good value for them, but it's a good opportunity for the college student as well. So I would hope to see maybe next year that we're looking at growing that program, because I know, I believe we have all those intergovernmental agreements already in place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. In our budget books, on page 142, I note that under Administration of Professional Services, the increase is 747%. Can you explain what's going on there? What professional services are we getting that caused over a 700% increase in the budget for that line item?
That's where that supplemental is moving to, I believe. It's not a salaried position. It's paid to ASU directly. Is that what you're asking?
I couldn't hear you.
Sorry. That's where that supplemental is getting moved to, is into that professional development light item. They're not paid by the City of Glendale. They're paid through ASU. So we have to pay it out of professional contractual to ASU, and then they administer the paycheck and all of that to the intern.
Okay. That explains that. On page 143, under Code, while I note, while I noted most departments saw a reduction in internal premiums, yours are up by 6%. How come there's no decrease in your internal premiums? Is it because you use more fuel than other? I, I don't understand.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I'm not certain either as to why the internal premiums increased for Code when they decreased for every other department, except for maybe the growth in Code over the last couple of years.
Mayor, members of the Council, Councilmember Clark, we'll actually have to look into that a little more deeply, but we'll, we'll get that information to you.
Okay. I, I noticed it only happened with a couple of departments, and this happened to be one of them, so if you could get back to me on that, I'd appreciate it. And then my last question has to do with, on the slide presentation, page 46, and it's your performance measure for percent of code compliance cases opened proactively. And in fiscal year 2022, it's 55%. Your target for 2025 is 70%. So my question is this, and it's a little loaded, but I think it's worth asking. Since we're limiting citizens to two complaints a week, one of the rationale that you gave publicly for that decision was that you're not relying on citizen complaints because code is going to be covering, covering every area of the city. So if that's the case, that we're shifting away from citizen complaints to code-generated complaints, why are the cases opened only at 70%? Wouldn't that percentage be higher since it's now going to be code-generated in terms of complaints?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, to clarify a couple of things, the change, administrative changes made to Glendale One that you're referencing impact about six or eight people within the city. A large portion of our city, a much larger portion of our city, I should say, the constituents, use Glendale One to file code complaints. So the impact of the administrative change is relatively small on the number of cases that are received from the community within the code division. We are, we have implemented a program over the last year that the inspectors do three to four inspections on every residential property per year. That's the goal. So they have their grid, which is like a patrol beat for the Police Department, but for an inspector, it's a grid. And then they have seven or eight subgrids within that grid, and they move through those subgrids every three to four months, one through eight, and then back to one again, so that they inspect every residential property at least three or four times a year.
So why wouldn't the proactive percentage be higher than, higher than 70%?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, because we still need to be responsive to the people who are using Glendale One to file complaints.
Okay. And, and since you brought up, well, I brought it up, and then you responded, but since this prohibition only, as you say, quote, impacts six or seven individuals, I said before, and I'll say again now publicly, I think it's draconian to penalize the entire community for the actions of six or seven. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Next.
All done.
Next?
Next, we have Emergency Management, and Nicole Munchen will be presenting.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to talk about the request for emergency management. Our purpose statement is to support the protection of life, property, and environment by leveraging, leveraging industry-best standards and work industry-best standards and working collaboratively with both the public and stakeholders who are experts in their respective fields to educate, plan, organize, equip, train, and exercise, thus creating a safe and resilient city. As Mr. Phelps mentioned earlier, we are looking at creating emergency management as a department, which is a best practice. Our budget is 48 percent salary and 39 percent internal services as well as 13 percent operating. The reason our internal services charges are so high or such a high percentage of our budget is because of the equipment, computers, and phones that are in place in the Emergency Operations Center. This past, or this current fiscal year, we implemented a Tier Two balanced scorecard, the first for emergency management as it has been a division under the fire department's budget to current. We've been looking at different things and ways to improve the information that's shared with the public regarding emergency management and topics of preparedness. This year, we updated the website and will be working to enhance more and provide additional information. We also implemented the Everbridge Mass Notification System and have been developing scenarios related to potential hazards and risks that we face and are looking forward to increasing those within the system. One of our primary focuses in this upcoming fiscal year will be to develop a formal training program for staff, city staff, related to emergency operations centers and the activations that we do. We have been supporting the city in incident management teams and activations, particularly for our large-scale special events like Super Bowl and the upcoming NCAA Men's Final Four this weekend. We've also had, put in structures for response to certain incidents that have occurred that have required emergency management support. So, these reflect that. We're also going to look at providing additional Incident Command System training for those leadership positions within that Incident Command System structure. You will notice that in a lot of cases, we don't have data tracking back and that is because we have historically been a division that's been focused on response and recovery and have not been as focused on these areas and collecting data for it, but we have started that with the Tier Two Balanced Scorecard process. For FY '24, we have, as I mentioned, we implemented a mass notification system which closes the gap in the ability to send out critical life safety information, not just to the public, but also to our employees where it might be needed. As part of our mega-event planning, we developed and implemented a public alert and warning plan for use during mega-events. This requires cross-collaboration, both with external stakeholders as well as internal partners. I mentioned that we've stood up incident management teams for these large-scale events, including Fiesta Bowl. We also did it for Luke Days and will be doing it for NCAA Men's Final Four. We began conducting meetings with both the police department, fire department, special event staff to determine if there are any support needs for the different events and concerts and other things that we're bringing in to, excuse me, both the Desert Diamond Arena and State Farm Stadium. And where there may be potential threats or concerns, we go ahead and create contingency plans should there be a need to escalate from event to incident because of something that has occurred. Thankfully, our public safety staff are great at what they do and we have not had to invoke any of those. At the early part of, actually, it was in the fall of last year, I moved the emergency management staff into the Emergency Operations Center so that we were all co-located, which also helped to co-locate some police department staff. And I've been looking at realigning our staff resources and growing our team to better reflect the organizational needs. And when I talk about the organizational needs, I'm not just specifically talking about emergency management, but the city as a whole, again, based on current threats, the nature of, of the environment, as well as those large-scale special events that we do bring With regard to our supplementals, you will notice that the emergency management budget is listed at $551,000. That is a transfer in that is reflected also as a transfer out from the fire department's budget. Again, we've been, for budget purposes, we've been a, we've been a division under the fire department. Organizationally, I've been reporting to Mr. St. John for almost, it's almost two, a year, a year now. Yeah. So, you'll also see that reflected on the fire department's budget as a transfer out.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mayor. With reference to page 350 in our budget books, you show salaries of $394,426. That's for how many employees?
That would be for four employees total.
Now, I'm confused because on page 350, it says your total budget is $1,079,106. Is this supplemental for 660, $660,000 in addition to that million?
No, the $551,000 listed for the emergency management budget is indeed part of that $1 million.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor?
Question?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I mean, mainly what you've talked about seems to be like emergency planning for city events and city coverage. What about community emergency preparedness and management? I know Mr. St. John and I have had a discussion about this. What level are you going to be reaching out to community? For example, say we have a communication emergency and we need to utilize ham radio operators. And along with that, giving support to the community for family and group emergency preparedness?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Malnar. To talk about the community preparedness, yes, we have been very focused on city preparedness related to the large-scale special events and a lot of that was due to timing and staff resources. However, looking forward, we do expect to increase our public outreach and start doing more of the public preparedness presentations and using and leveraging other departments like Pub, Parks, and Recreation and others, community services, to get some of that information out.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like us to begin to reach out to some of the available resources at the state or federal level that are focused on this particular issue with family preparedness and community preparedness and utilizing those services and linking those. And I know there's been a budget constraint in the past to be able to participate in those because they do cost money, but that's what I would like to see this turn into a little bit more. Thank you.
Mayor, to complete the supplementals that we're asking for, we do have an emergency manager right now. We're asking to reclass that to a director position. We did work with human resources on that reclass and what that would look like if approved by the council, and so that dollar amount reflects what we would need. We do have a new FTE for a management assistant. We're currently underfilling a vacant position within emergency management to get that management assistant sooner rather than later. The management assistant will basically handle the administrative responsibilities that are currently managed by Nicole and Ms. Maddie, who's sitting over here next to me. And it allows them to get into the depth of what they should be doing in emergency management, which is the citywide and community preparedness piece. And then finally, we have an emergency management vehicle. The vehicle that Ms. Munson's currently driving belongs to the fire department, so we need to replace that vehicle so that she can respond to scenes as needed. The $4,000 is just the shop and fuel charges, the actual vehicle cost is within the fleet's budget and will be presented later. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the mass notification system, did we, did we implement a reverse 911 or what, did we not have that before?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Tomachoff. There is the reverse 911 system through the police department. They have actually transitioned to, or are in the process of transitioning to another type of reverse 911 system as part of the regional, Maricopa Regional 911. The system that we've implemented is for outreach to residents that, the system's called Everbridge, and they have a module within there that allows access to contact information so we can draw geographical polygons if there's a localized incident. With reverse 911, that is an opt-in system. We also have an opt-in component with the Everbridge. It just furthers our expansive reach for making notifications in an emergency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Bessler presenting engineering.
I'm accompanied today by John Murphy. John is our engineering administrator for administration and so in that role, he manages the procurements, the Title 34 compliances, and all of our financial services along with Kathy Mitchell from our department. We're very excited to be here today to share with you our story and then our ask. I know my colleagues are hoping that I do that in a quick amount of time and I will. The main thing that we're going to share with you today initially, it's things you've heard me say before, is the approach, thank you, John, the approach on how we strategically view how to deliver the CIP for which you've entrusted us largely with delivering the CIP along with managing the city's right-of-way. We want you to be comfortable with the work we do and the way that we go about doing it. You can see from our organizational chart, we're very flat, that's by design. We have about 40 employees in engineering, so we don't need to have excessive levels of management in order to deliver the product that you've entrusted us with. With that strategy, we push responsibility to the lowest level, or not necessarily the lowest level, but the appropriate level to the people closest to the work so that they have the authority, the responsibility, and the accountability to work hard every day. I'm going to talk a little bit about that later. We're linear so that we can move, remove single points of failure, although because we are small, we have experienced at times, single points of failure, that's something we're cognizant about and we work towards trying to eliminate those in the structure that we do, the way we organize ourselves. And it also allows us in this linear way to move projects through just in that very fashion from study, design, construction, and then turn over to the operating department. In that way, we also try to distribute our work very evenly. We also think differently maybe than a typical engineering department. I wouldn't say than other departments because we have a very, a culture of innovation in Glendale that I've not experienced in many of the cities that I've worked in. The city leadership, the city council, really embraces that, that quest for innovation as long as it's done in a measured and responsible way. So, we have that, we've won five, and recently, we've won five state or national awards for innovation and design that we came up with internally, not something that we farmed out. And we're system thinkers. We believe that things happen in an organization, when you take, peel back all the layers, in an operating department, things happen for two reasons. Because you've got good systems in place to ensure that they happen and those are supported by good working relationships. So, those two things really are the strength on how we're able to move work through. You can see from our operating budget that we're mostly people as essentially an internal service. That is the bulk of our cost. I would just go on to say you don't have a revenue budget here, but basically, your engineering department functions as a zero cost. Either the cost of engineering is assigned to capital projects in some sort of an, not some sort, in an engineering cost recovery, or through the various permits that the city requires for use of the right-of-way by private, by the private sector. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to John Murphy. He's going to walk you through sort of the strategy again about the bulk of our work is either in managing the right-of-way or in project management, project delivery.
Thank you, Don. What we're going to do here, we'll start out briefly going over where we are with the current market conditions. As Don said, one of our main charges is to ensure the CIP gets delivered. And what we're showing here is the annual percentage change in the construction market, which includes labor and materials. And so, what you could see here is Phoenix is right there, we're still in the top 10, it's a, still a hot market, and we went up about 5 percent year over year. On the next slide here, you're going to kind of see what makes up that growth. Materials, you know, the inputs to the construction is still a big item. Now, luckily, a lot of those costs have stabilized. You're no longer trying to catch falling swords anymore. You can kind of begin to project what the new normal is. The other issue, which we spoke to a little bit earlier about the cost of labor for the Phoenix area, it's one of the biggest drivers. So, you can see here that the, in the comment there, that there's an increase of 10 percent year over year in the current market conditions for construction. And what that shows you is that there is a high demand out there for skilled workers and in order to get those skilled workers, you have to pay. And that pay is driving up your finished product of the cost. Going back now to engineering and what we do, this chart right here kind of shows you our workload and it shows you the workload of the capital improvement plan. So, you know, you look at it and our average spend is probably right around the $85 million a year. However, as many of you are aware, the city's undertaking a few really large construction projects at the moment. We have an $89 million city hall, we have a $22 million police evidence storage, $12 million fire station renovation, just to name a few, and then you also have Harrows Park, $25 million. So, that projection column over there in the far right, it's sitting at $92 million. You're going to see that continually hang out at that level, if not a little bit more over the next two to three years. And I'll turn it over to Don.
Just a point of information, why you will see this chart, like last year, it dipped down more than what our usual is, is because essentially, projects are done in two phases and interestingly, the schedule is about the same for both, the design phase and the construction phase. So, last year, we were doing many more designs. That only costs, the soft cost associated with design, not the design itself, is about 20 percent of a capital project. To spend on the construction is about 80 percent. And again, the timeline, depending on the complexity of the project, is about the same. So, this is probably one of the, one of my proudest opportunities to share with you how we do things in engineering. It's a little bit difficult to read, but I know you have the printed version, but what this is, this is a screenshot from the employee satisfaction survey that the city does. It used to be every two years, the city manager's asked to do it, I believe every year now, with our performance management department. And it's really to ensure that we are engaging our employees and making sure that where we fall short, we think about that and think about how we can always be trying to do better. I like the term the city manager has used several times, is we're not striving for perfection, we're striving for excellence. And I think what we've tried to show you here is there's, these are the roll-up of different questions that the employees were asked in engineering in the survey. I'll boil them down, there really are. Do you, does your job matter and do you believe people think your job matters? Are you treated well by your supervisors and by management? And are you, do you treat each other well in the workplace? Do the employees treat each other well? And you can see that there was a favorable response to almost 100 percent of those big five questions. And I will tell you, again, having worked in a few places, an organization that has that level of camaraderie, that level of commitment, that level of good feeling about the work they do, is a pretty darn good place to work. And it's all of the things that you're going to hear today and Thursday that makes it that way, but engineering staff certainly feel that way. And I'll just finish this slide by saying, oh, a month or so ago, the city manager had the annual employee breakfast and he really asked the city employees, he said, when you cut through everything, there's three things I want you guys to do. When you're at work, work hard. When you're at work, work hard. When you're not at work, have a life. And when you are at work, treat each other well. And I think this slide really captures that life balance, that camaraderie, that level of enthusiasm that the engineering team brings to you. So we have a number of performance measures. I'm just going to hit a few highlights here. One of the ones that is shown up here is process invoices within seven business days. That seems like a pretty odd performance measure, especially for an engineering department. It is, and of all the engineering departments that I'm aware of, nobody else does it. And I'll tell you why we do it. We do it because we want Glendale to be the client of choice. When contractors are lining up their annual work plan, we want them to give us, they want to work with Glendale, and therefore, they're excited to work with Glendale, and they'll give us their most competitive pricing to do that, because we pay our bills on time. Smaller companies, subcontractors are not expected to float their payroll for sixty days, sometimes ninety days, in order to get paid. That's commonplace in the government marketplace, and so setting ourselves apart in that way is something that's really valuable and ends up paying dividends for our taxpayers. We treat our vendors fairly. We'll move on to the next one, warranty inspections. So we do a lot of warranty inspections, either for work that's done for the city and the right-of-way, particularly in our roads and streets, or work that's done by contractors that use our right-of-ways. And behind every one of these warranty inspections, warranty inspections are usually done at the one or two-year period, depending on the complexity of the project. Our goal is to pass those ninety-five to a hundred percent of the time, and you can see we've done very well. And the reason we want that is because it's just not one inspection we go out to do at warranty. There's three to twenty different inspections that occurred prior to that. If we do our inspections properly, then when we get to warranty, they're going to pass. They're not going to fail because we were paying attention all along the way. So why is that important? Because things are cheaper when you do them right the first time. It causes less disruption, especially on our street network, to the traveling public, to the community in, at large, and for commerce. And then finally, I want to talk about development review on the next slide. And this is, we set days to do this, and we exceed those days most of the time. You see Jamie Chapin up here just about once a month, if not twice a month, to ask you to do things about right-of-way instruments. And she's the one who's largely responsible for that. And in the private sector, in the development world, time is money. We've all heard that. So what do we want? We want to make sure that we meet our KPIs on this, and you can see that we are. We want to be reliable. People, when they come to have their permits reviewed, they know what they can expect. We want to meet the deadlines. We want to be fair and sensible when they struggle and have problems, and we want to help them troubleshoot problems so we can get to an acceptable solution and help them move forward in the process. Our process isn't just regulating, it's also being helpful, because everybody benefits when we're helpful. We have a number of accomplishments up there on this slide. I just would call attention to something I know we've talked about previously, but as we began the downtown campus redevelopment project, we had to basically figure out a way to move everybody's operation out of City Hall. We had fourteen different department operations that left City Hall, and in less than a year, were all up and running. And I would say that generally, people would say that was a very seamless exercise. It didn't go perfect, but generally, it was seamless, done on time, within budget. On the next slide, our land development person, again, is Jamie Chapin. She had two vacancies. And instead of just saying, fill my vacancies, because that's what government does, is we just fill things the same way all the time, because we have them, she said, no, I'm willing to take on a little more work while I think about how we can restructure, because we have a tie-in that needs to be made with our right-of-way besides just development review. And so we did that. We worked with HR to reclassify some positions. We worked with finance to make sure we had the proper budgeting. And instead, now we have positions that we're recruiting for currently that will help really, it really embraces our, it's forecasting the future of our development work that we do and our right-of-way work that we do, so that we're staffed properly and not coming back in tears and asking for a position that maybe is in addition to something that we probably don't need anymore. And so we need to think through it, and we need to change with the times. And then the last one is, the bullet I would talk to here is the third bullet. The city has adopted these employee excellence awards for service and for all of the different performance measures that we have. I've worked a bit, a fair number of municipalities, and every municipality I've worked in aspired to having an employee-based, a performance award, a recognition award, and every municipality except Glendale has not been able to do that. It just ultimately gets too hard to be able to make it happen, and so we're very happy that we have employees that have received those success factor awards. I think it, again, it speaks highly of the organization that we all have developed here as a community and as a team. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John to tell you what we're actually asking.
Appreciate it, Don. What we're asking here for are two one-time supplementals. The first one is the stormwater outfall maintenance. We've gone out and identified at our various, we have, you know, six stormwater outfall maintenance that we have an IGA with the county, Maricopa County Flood District. And we went out and we identified various, I'd call, capital maintenance issues that have, anything from grading and drainage stuff to fixing of gates and things like that. So this is a one-time request of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to get into our various outfall channels, clean those up, make some permanent additions and fixtures to those. And then the last one is the design standards refresh. This kind of goes to what Don's talking about with all the development going on in the city. This is, it's a planning tool that's used by a lot of developers, home builders, and it gives them the idea of what we want in our city in terms of development. So this plan that we currently have is about ten years old, so it's about time for a refresh. Thank you.
Just to clarify that last one, this is specifically the engineering and construction standards, so that if a home builder's building a piece of infrastructure that ultimately the city will be maintaining, it's built to our standard, so we don't have a mishmash of different things happening out there. And as John said, it's been about ten years since it was updated. It needs to be refreshed, and we need to bring in some additional areas. We'll be helping parks a little bit more than they've had representation in the past.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, we're done.
Several questions, so bear with me, please. First of all, a little sugar, kudos. Your slide sixty-eight, your favorability survey, that is terrific. I would like to see this kind of measurement with every city department's report, because I think it's a very valuable tool and gives you a real sense of how the employees feel about their job in the organization. I think that's terrific. Would like to see it used everywhere. The other kudo is on your slide, page seventy-three, the idea of job orders, acquiring twenty vendors, so that you don't have to rely on these linking agreements all the time, is also an excellent idea. Speeds the whole process up. You've got people lined up that you know that you can rely upon, so I think that implementation is also terrific. In terms of questions, excuse me, I only have a couple. One is on page three-thirty-seven of the budget book. Professional services looks like it's a new line item, and it's in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Can you explain why this is a new line item and what it's being used for?
Mayor, Council, that three-fifty is the supplemental that you just saw.
Oh, that is the supplemental?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Then on slide, slide presentation sixty-nine today of your performance measures. Percent of CIP invoices processed by the department within seventy days. In twenty-twenty-four, you met seventy-eight percent, which meant that twenty-two percent didn't get paid within seven days. What seems to be the issue here that, that all of the vendors can't be paid in it? Is it on their end or our end?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, it's on both ends, but when we measure it, we measure it when it's, what happens sometimes is they'll submit an invoice, because we've gone to online invoicing now, which has been very helpful, and it's not done right. Well, we don't start the clock till they give us an actual valid invoice, and then we start the clock. So it's on our end. It could be working with the partner department to make sure we have the money in the exact right accounts to do it. It could be workload issues where our staff, but what has driven that backwards is that we, the vast majority of them are seven days or less, but then we'll have a few outliers that are like twenty-two days or something. I would just say this, since we adopted this standard, our average was eighteen days, and we've got it down to most, it's eleven days if you average it, but most of them are within the seven days.
Okay, thank you. And then perhaps more concerning to me, and again, you'll explain why the number isn't higher, although your target is a hundred percent for next year. Percent of projects delivered on time, twenty-twenty-four was seventy-six percent. Your target for twenty-twenty-five is a hundred percent. What would lead that number to be seventy-six percent for twenty-twenty-four? What's going on there?
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Clark, it could be any number of things, but the general thing that we're seeing is definitely supply chain issues. And so why you, that's why you've seen us in the last eighteen months come to you with long lead items, especially with our GMPs, and say, we're breaking out this out to an early GMP, because we're being told it's twelve to fourteen months, and sometimes it's sixteen to eighteen. So there's usually, I would say, usually it's supply chain. But again, we're not infallible. Some things don't stay right on our inner radar scope the whole time, and so it could be a little of that, but it's usually supply chain.
So let me follow up with one last question. If it's a supply chain issue, when you're in the design phase and you know you're going to need approximately X amount of a certain product, do we go ahead, or does a contractor go ahead and order it then, or do they have to wait until the whole project is improved before they can order material?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, generally, what we try to do is to get an early pricing or an early contract or an early GMP to get that. So once we, when we know we're into something, so for instance, electrical gears, all pushed way out. If we're working a water plant project for Ron or streets, we've got traffic signals, we're trying to get an early GMP out very quickly. You just had one, I believe, for the downtown campus last week, and it was for that very reason. So we're always trying to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. As so often seems to be the case, that though they're employed independently, the thought process that Councilmember Clark and I use overlap and run parallel, because I too was quite taken by slide number sixty-eight with the employee survey results, and this is the kind of data that I believe Councilmember's been asking for for some time, and I would join in her request that we be provided that data across departments. Thank you.
Mr. Melnar.
Thank you. First, your accomplishments and goals are admirable. Congratulations on a job well done. I've heard many times that we're seeing large construction projects start to decline. Are you anticipating that with your construction, engineering inspections, et cetera? Are you anticipating a decline now? Are you seeing a decline happening, or where are we at currently?
Mayor, Councilmember Melnar, just, so I'm giving you a good, helpful answer. Are you talking about the general construction we're seeing in the city or stuff that the city is doing, or both?
Well, it would be both. Anything that the engineering department would be involved with.
Well, let me start with the city. With the city, we've had a very robust CIP the last five years, and, you know, you saw the city manager early talk about a commitment to taking care of what we have. So we see it being pretty steady within the city's resources themselves. It's a huge commitment to asset management, asset preservation. We work closely with Michelle's Department Field Operations to make that all happen. Separately, what we are seeing out in the private sector, we're going to see a lot more infill projects that require a lot of, in terms of the work that we do in engineering, which is predominantly the utilities that are in the street, not exclusively, but predominantly, overlock grading, some other things. But that has certainly slowed down some, but it's not diminished, or it's not, it's not to some low level. It's still right up there. But what we are seeing, and what you can anticipate seeing, in my view, for the next ten years, is this constant quest for telecom infrastructure to be spread generously throughout the community. It is a highly competitive market. Innovation is at light speed, to use a term, and the consumer's thirst for quicker, faster, smaller, cheaper is just there. So we have a number of different vendors that have come to us that have started looking at trying to expand their telecom infrastructure, and I'm not going to, we're not going to see a slowdown to that.
Okay, very good. That answers my question. And if I may, Mayor, just one more comment, maybe a question relating to small, the small projects. You talked about infill, and I know that there have been some concerns from residents that are working on very small projects. And this has to do with planning and zoning as well as engineering department, as far as getting those smaller projects speed to market like we do the larger projects. Can you address that and how you're accomplishing that?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Melnar. You know, we're small enough to know you, big enough to serve you, and that's sort of how we go about doing our work every day. I see Jamie Chapin, who predominantly would be in that area, on, talking to people for an hour, if that's what it takes to help the small person work their way through the system. We have great relationship with Randy's people over in Development Service. So it's really a hands-on approach. It's not a, it's not an assembly line. So anytime we encounter a smaller customer, we treat them as if they're a big customer. That's just the way we approach it. Now, the amount of time will obviously be different, but the level of enthusiasm is there. I mean, a lot of it is about attitude, and, you know, the slide you have up there right now speaks to how the employees view their work. They view that their work is important, and they understand how it drives the mission and how it supports all the city's functions, not just what engineering does.
Thanks for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for good presentation. Not surprised, honestly, by the feedback you're getting from your employees. So, I mean, that just shows good leadership. So congratulations to you and your entire team. I did have a question on the professional cost estimating request that was not approved. What is that? And are you absorbing that? Is it something we need, or something we need and wasn't approved? Or what exactly is that?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchoff. I believe it was fifty thousand dollars. We put it in there, and it, what we do for unusual projects or complicated projects, there's a time when we're doing early in either the design or even the study, we'll go out and ask for a third-party opinion on a cost estimate. That's what it's for. We're able to absorb it, because what we will do is just assign that cost to the project itself, and we're able to make that work. So that's fine.
Very good. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Kennedy for Parks and Recs.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here to be able to talk to you about Parks and Recreation. There we go. So Parks and Recreation Department consists of approximately a twenty-one-point-two-million-dollar budget with eighty-six full-time FTEs across the Parks, Recreation, and Civic Center divisions that make up the operations of our department. As you can see, our salary percentage is about fifty-four percent, thirty-seven percent going towards our operating costs, and the remaining nine percent with our internal services. So as part of our balanced scorecard strategic initiatives, I'll just touch on a couple of high points here, you know. You know, in our improved resource alignment, you'll notice that we've seen support, as you've been able to support us, of full-time employees per 10,000 residents has increased over the last several years. Also, we've seen an increase in our funding in the form of cost per acre of park maintenance. We've seen that increase over the last few years. Our second area of strategic initiatives is improved recreation programming. You'll notice here that there's an increase in the number of programs located in varied park locations. This comes from our disparity report that recognized the need to offer services in underserved areas. So we've launched a mobile rec program that has helped with those increased numbers. And you'll also notice an increase in attendance at all of our facilities throughout the park system. With that, I'll move on to our fiscal year '24 accomplishments and touch on some of these. We've increased or implemented a new park maintenance schedule and park standards checklist. This will help, you know, with our overall service level provided. We've also increased our technical training in various aspects of park maintenance. We've partnered with some volunteers from various organizations to plant over 70 trees in different park locations. Our irrigation system audits have been completed. And we've been able to complete two entire park irrigation system replacement projects as well in our recreation area. As you recall, we reopened the three community centers with help from many partners and other departments. The centers are now opened six days a week to provide community programs. This is again a continuation of our Parks and Rec Master Plan and the disparity report calling for that need. The Glendale... Excuse me, I went too fast here. The Glendale Adult Center celebrated its 20th anniversary in July of 2023. And then we also established and implemented the do mobile rec program that I talked about. This again is a continuation of the Parks and Rec Master Plan and is part of the disparity report. And we're bringing programming to underserved areas throughout the community. The Glendale Civic Center again was named... Again, named in the top 10 in the Arizona Business Magazine's Ranking Arizona Publication for Meeting and Convention Facilities. And we were also able to upgrade our ADA hearing accessibility system to improve that service here in this chamber. Following some of the other comments from other departments, our staff, professional development, we've been able to get staff members through additional supervisors academy to help with our succession planning and professional staff development, as well as we were fortunate enough to have six winners in the city's Success Factor Award Program in 2023. Very proud of that. So now moving on to our requests. The first three items you see on this sheet are items or positions that currently exist as contract employees. These are the positions that helped open the community centers and were funded by ARPA. So this request here is to shift the funding source from ARPA when it sunsets at the end of this calendar year, 2024, into the general fund. So that covers the recreation programmers, the rec coordinators and the management assistant for those three community centers. The next request is two service workers in parks. That is a six-month request of funding. That is anticipation of the completion of the next phase of Heroes Park Project that's getting ready to kick off. So we'll have two requests for two service workers to help maintain the approximate 40 acres of additional park development within Heroes Park. The next two items are the same as the first three, the temp pay for community centers and the sports and health programs. These have been funded by ARPA for the last couple of years. And again, with the ARPA funding sunsetting, this is to move that funding source from ARPA into the general fund for those two items. The next item is contract increases that we're anticipating for landscape maintenance. We have two large landscape maintenance contracts and these are anticipation in what those cost increases are going to be in the next year. The next item, Parks Maintenance Services and Supplies, in 52,000. This is comprised of the Community Fishing Program is seeing some cost increase for the stocking from the Arizona Game and Fish Department. There's an increase in the maintenance of viewing blinds at Thunderbird Conservation Park. This incorporates irrigation repairs as well as park sign replacements. And also Mayor and Councilmember Clark's question earlier about the $3,000 request. This, with the support of this item, we're able to roll that into, absorb it into our existing funding. So Ms. Rios was correct in her statement this morning. The next item there is the marketing and promotions. This is additional funding for cost increases when we mail out our Glendale at Play magazine for all of our programs. We mail that out three times a year. It also covers our paid social media advertising as well as an increase in cost in our email marketing services that we use. Went too fast again. Here we go. Professional development and hiring costs. This is to increase cost for professional development, aids in our succession planning within the department. The entrance and courtyard safety enhancement is for the outside, the front of this building is to improve the safety and enhance the aesthetics in front of the civic center. The $120,000 recreation equipment and supplies. This is for replacement of fitness equipment at Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center, starting a phased-in approach of replacing... Many of that equipment is original to the building. And there's also funding in here to replace some fitness equipment at the Glendale Adult Center and also some enhancements to our archery range in Heroes Park. Next item, aquatics programs, supplies and services. The majority of this request is for increased cost of pool chemicals and then also some various supplies needed to operate our aquatics programming. The next item after that is some new window treatments for the adult center. Now that the second floor has been built out and is occupied, it's needed for some enhancement for climate improvements at that facility. The next increase, a water utilities cost increase. This incorporates the new water rate increase that went into effect in January and also based on historical needs and usage of water throughout the park system. And next item, tree trimming, pruning and removal services. We have a contractor who we anticipated this is their cost increase for those services. And then the final item on this slide, $50,000 for increased enhanced trail maintenance at Thunderbird Conservation Park to maintain the trails throughout that park system. And to also utilize this as a batch for any potential grants that we're able to identify. And this being the final slide, this is the ARPA section of those positions and expenses that I talked about at the first slide of supplementals. So this is this first six months of expenses for ARPA covering until we switch over to the general fund if approved. So with that, be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Good presentation. I'm glad to see that there's some supplementals that you are asking for beyond the ARPA transition. A few years ago, council was taking on a tour of our handful of our parks just to illustrate some of the issues we're having. And those included public restrooms and some of the play courts and some other things like that. But one that continues to be a thorn in my side, I could say, is the condition of the turf in our neighborhood parks and our regional parks as well. What are we doing to get rid of the weeds and improve the quality of the grass? And how far along are we on that project?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, that's a concern, you know, for our team as well. And what we've been doing, the irrigation audits have been completed. So we've been able to audit all irrigation systems throughout the park system. We've asked for and received last year supplemental for some additional parts for irrigation supplies. So we've been making those repairs. We also have five overall irrigation projects, irrigation replacement projects that were funded by ARPA. We've had two of them completed and we're still working on three additional ones. There is also a CIP project for a couple of other major projects, Grand Canal Linear Park being one of them that will focus on irrigation replacement. So basically, we're looking at... We've got a two-pronged approach, the capital approach that we've been going through with assistance from ARPA. And then also the internal approach by our staff completing the audits and, you know, additional training. As I mentioned, we did some additional irrigation training from our new staff. So between those two approaches and the recent supplementals last year and some additional funding this year, we're looking to improve the irrigation system by replacing those parts. Using smart irrigation is also another approach as we've been able to take advantage of the Water Services Grant Program and replaced several irrigation parts with the smart irrigation system to help us control and better schedule and gauge the system. So without getting into too much more detail, that's kind of an overview of our approach.
Thank you. And Mayor, if I could continue. And then for... And I think that's all great work and it's definitely been needed. Then for the battle between the grass we want and the weeds we don't, are we expecting the better irrigation system to allow the grass to thrive and push out the weeds? Are we going to be doing weed treatment or what do you expect?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, another good question. You know, we have created, when I mentioned, we created new park schedules and a park standards checklist. It also includes a maintenance plan that's scheduled out weekly and monthly throughout the entire year that includes pre-emergent and post-emergent exercises. So we have those clearly identified and a plan put together that staff's able to implement and follow to help, you know, mitigate the unsightly green. We want it to be green, healthy turf.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Tomachoff's next, and then Councilmember Clark, and then Mr. Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm... So I'm looking at the ARPA and it shows Recreation Coordinator, two new FTEs. But on page 11 in the budget book, it shows that we had nine and we're... And no changes. And then nine Recreation Coordinators. So are these being shown somewhere else or I'm a little confused by that? On the new... On the FTE's page, on page 11, it shows Recreation Coordinator, 20... Put my microphone over here. 2024 adopted FTEs, nine. FTE totals for fiscal year 2025, nine, Recreation Coordinators.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I don't have the entire budget book in front of me. I'll have to defer maybe for some help from our budget and finance team.
So are we adding two in addition to the nine? Is that... Or did we have seven and now we'll have nine? I'm just curious. We don't know that answer right now. I'll go ahead and ask another question while everybody looks through their budget book. The other question I had was, let me find it here. You're adding recreation from going from one recreation programmer and adding six to seven. Are those... Do those... I'm not sure what a recreation programmer, do they put together programs? Or do they put together and teach the programs? Or what is exactly does a recreation programmer do?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, yes, the recreation programmers are the ones that design and put together the programming plans. And in many cases, they are the ones that also implement them and teach them. It varies based on need and whatever, if we have some temporary staff or specialized instructors to help supplement. But generally speaking, the programmers are there to design the program and also implement them.
Okay, so we're increasing the staff of our recreation programmers. And then the coordinators, if I may, Mayor, then the coordinators are the ones that actually... They do the programs also?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, the recreation coordinators are also responsible for overseeing building operations. You know, so they're the ones that would be, you know, responsible for the opening and closing and overseeing, you know, the facility itself.
Okay. And then I had one final question, Mayor. On the supervisors, recreation, that's going from zero to three. So who do they supervise? What is a recreation supervisor? Do they supervise the coordinators and the programmers? Or that's... How many people would the three... I assume those are promotions? Or are they new FTEs that we're hiring?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, the recreation supervisors went through a class and comp change in title. They used to be called senior rec coordinators. Now they're called supervisors, so they're existing positions. They're not new ones. And they were... They are the ones that oversee the recreation coordinators and programmers. So we have three. One is at Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center that oversees that facility plus the entire aquatics program. We have one at the Glendale Adult Center that oversees the adult center along with our sports and health programming. And then we have one supervisor that oversees the three community centers and the programming that goes on at those three facilities.
Okay, so those have already been approved as reclass. They're not new FTEs. Mayor, I have one more question. I know that this is a concern for, for sure, Vice Mayor Hugh and myself. I don't see it as a supplemental, but the additional pay for lifeguards. I know we're offering very competitive, I think probably maybe almost, if not the highest, we're one of the highest, what we're offering to hire lifeguards. How is that going? And are we going to be able to open both pools on time this year at the same time?
Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, yes, we are currently trending very on par with last year to where we're going to be able to, we should be able to hire enough to get both pools open on a regular schedule at the same time like we did last year. And the ARPA funding is what was utilized to begin with to enhance the pay. And that's what's continued and then will be, is worked into the forecast to the general fund as well. If I'm not mistaken with our...
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 249 of the budget book, with regard to the civic center, the total cost of operating the civic center, the 2025 request is $894,504. So we're inching close to a million dollars. We're not there yet, but we're getting there. How much revenue? And I understand we're constrained because this room is being used for city council and obviously can't be rented out. But how much revenue did the civic center earn last fiscal year to offset this kind of expense for this building?
Mayor and Councilmembers, I don't have the exact number right in front of me. I believe it's around $450,000 in revenue is what we are anticipating this current fiscal year. So I don't have last year's number off the top of my head. Perhaps Budget and Finance might have a closer view on that.
Mayor, members of the council, we don't have that information in front of us, but we can get that number to you.
Okay. I'm going to assume in the absence of any hard numbers at this point, it's probably half of what the expenditures are. And I think that makes the case at some point to consider another use for this building. That's a comment that's not a question. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. I was surprised but happy to see the number of supplementals you submitted because I know our parks are really important to our residents. In regards to our master plan, how are we doing today in relationship to the master plan?
Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Melnar, so the master plan has a long list of goals and action items that we review on a regular basis. You know, and one of the main things was to maintain services that you already have. So with the support from this council and the allocation of ARPA funds, I think we've been doing really a very good job of following the master plan. We've replaced, you know, more than 15 different playgrounds. We're working on five irrigation project replacements along with some of these... You know, we have some master plans for some of our major parks that are in various stages of design and/or soon to be construction. So I believe that the process we're following, we're reviewing those goals and we're making good progress. I've always identified. Another example is the, and we talked about the mobile recreation program, trying to get services out to the underserved areas within the community, ones that may not have a community center nearby. That program is getting out. It's in infancy, but we're seeing some growth and some early success that I think is making an impact in those underserved areas.
Okay, thank you very much. As you know, we've had, with my office, had some concerns about the equity of some of the parks not getting the upgrades as others are. How are you addressing that?
Mayors and Councilmember Melnar, yes, that is, you know, a challenge. When you've got, you know, we've got 120 locations that we maintain, 75 of them are parks and other 20 that are retention basins that require various different levels of replacement of older amenities. And it's challenging. You can't get to all of it all the time. So there's been a plan that we put in that's been, you know, worked on and is continually worked on. It's a dynamic document of looking at age of infrastructure, conditions, complaints, usage patterns. So really, we look at those types of factors to try to make the best decisions on what is needed, what the funding availability is and try to hit all parts of the community so it's not all located in one or two areas. But so it's really a balancing act. It's not just a real simple, easy formula. We try to look at it from a lot of different vantage points, but mainly those are the top areas that we look at.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as is quite often the case, by applying our own thought processes independently, Councilmember Clark and I come up with diametrically opposite points of view. And I share, we've done that here. I see this civic center as a tremendous asset for our community and its social life and cultural opportunities. I believe that with the construction of the... with the construction of the hotel on the neighboring parcel, that it will become a economic driver for downtown by allowing to, us to attract the types of events that are multiple days and maybe require, or will benefit from overnight stays and all of that that we haven't been able to do in the past. So I would encourage this council and the next councils to, really to keep this asset and to work with other development in the downtown to make this as productive as possible. And I think it can be. Thank you.
Okay, with that said, thank you. We are going to do police next, and then after police, we'll break for lunch.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of the Council. With me today, I have Assistant Chief Colby Brandt. I'll be starting the presentation and then he will be doing our Budget Sup presentation. I won't bore you with this stuff. This is just the makeup of our department. We've made no significant changes. You're all very familiar with how we operate. But in, looking at our KPIs, what I want to start with, these are not actual KPIs, but they are important numbers for the council. This is looking at our crime last year, and you will see that last year, we did have an overall drop in crime. There was a 4.6% increase in violent crime, but a 29, more than 29% decrease in property crimes. And obviously, that's a significant departure from where we've been the last few years, especially as we came out of COVID. You can see the breakdown in the UCR parts of violent and property crime as well as our, our clearances. As we move into optimizing our services, our calls for service decreased just slightly last fiscal year. And then our Priority One calls and our Priority Two calls, our response times were kind of where they have been. I will say, we're, we're tracking it currently, and we're doing much better in our response times, primarily because of a, a switch in how we're policing. We're, we've really focused on fundamental policing. We've gotten away from some of the academia and gone back to basics, which is being out there in the community, traffic stops, field contacts, investigating crimes. And we're really seeing a, a difference, as you can see here, but it's even more significant to where we are today. DUIRS were also up. And then our answering times in 911, again, they are about where they were, but this is also going up significantly in large part because of some technology that we have and something that I'll get into in, in a few moments, where we're actually communicating via text with callers, providing them information as a result, not as a result, after their call has been handled by the officers. And it's giving them their report number and some significant information for them to have. And that has actually reduced our calls into the center after someone makes a call asking for further information. Strengthening our workforce, this is actually one of our KPIs. Glendale has always been and still continues to be on the leading edge of policing as it's related to our specialties. We stay very current with the leading edge of training and technology for all of our officers. So we have a very robust training program. We have our post-training that is required of us every year. That's just to keep our certifications. But then we also have additional training, whether it be in homicide investigations, accident reconstruction, narcotics investigations, all of the skill sets that go into that, the requirements by the courts, as well as technology that helps to enhance what we do. And we're very intentional on the training that we give to our agency. Improving community safety, this is going back to traffic stops. So this is all based on quarterly reports, or not quarterly, I'm sorry, fiscal year reports within the quarter this fiscal year. But exactly 12 months ago, we really started working on that fundamental policing philosophy and having our officers out of their cars with traffic stops, field contacts. And last year alone, in the calendar year, not fiscal year, we saw a 34% increase in our field contacts and a 45% increase in our traffic stops. This just enumerates where we're at based on fiscal year. So this is the system that I was telling you about. When someone calls the police department, once we get their number and, and the call has been handled, they are sent a text asking for their input on our performance. So how, how was the communication specialist who took this, the call rated one through five? And then how was the officer that responded to the call? And as of January 2024, we had a 41% participation rate from the citizens and an 89% positive response to those surveys. And this is that system that I briefly talked about that also will let them know what their police report number is, if it's going to be assigned to a detective, if they want prosecution, don't want prosecution. And this is something that we can continue to build on. So in the future, when a case gets assigned to a detective, they will be given a message that tells them who the detective is that is assigned to their case. If an arrest was made, they'll be notified via this system as well. And it's our attempt to be more transparent and more communicative with our community in a way that makes sense and utilizes technology. Our accomplishments, again, this is traffic stops, traffic citations. This is an effort to reduce the many accidents that we have. It's, will come as no surprise that we are not just a destination city, we are a pass-through city. We do see a lot of accidents on our roadways. Many times, they do lead to fatalities. Two weeks ago, you may have seen a press conference that all the West Valley Chiefs conducted in that we are working together because we all recognize that we serve the same communities, whether people are passing through or going to destination locations in the West Valley. We are serving the same people and we are united as police chiefs in keeping all of our roadways safe. And we're doing that in conjunction with each other, with our traffic units and our patrol officers to try and reduce the traffic accidents, but for certain, get the word out that reckless driving in the West Valley will not be tolerated. And I think we'll just move into supplements since it's almost lunchtime. So what I'll do now is I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Colby Brandt.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of Council. As the chief mentioned, I'll walk you through this year's supplements. The first one is for 13 COPS grant-funded police officers. This is something that was approved by council. This is the amount of money that will be responsible for, for, for salaries and equipment for those officers. Important to note that these officers will be going directly into the Patrol Division, and in large part, that is to cover the westward, western expansion. The next one is two police sergeants. That is to cover supervision for the 13 previously mentioned police officers. So again, going into the Patrol Division, and they will be directly responsible for supervising those 13 new officers. The next one is to reclass an officer to sergeant. One of our Labor Presidents was recently promoted to sergeant. The MOU does allow for him to stay in his current role. So this reclass will allow for him to continue with those responsibilities as a sergeant. The next one is a forensic specialist, and that is a Coverdell Grant position. This forensic specialist will basically add to the three that the council approved last year. The program has been extremely successful. So these are the folks that are out there handling the crime scene calls. They're in the field. They're responding to burglary calls, those sorts of things. It also allows for our scientists to stay in the laboratory and for them to work on, you know, the, the laboratory work. So it's been a very successful program. This will add an additional person to that. Right in line with that is the forensics supervisor. So once we added those additional positions as well as this one, it just is becoming a little bit too much to ask of one police forensic supervisor. So she's got six scientists plus now the, the four additional. So that span of control is just a little bit too large. So we'd like to add an additional supervisor in, in our lab. The next one is our 911 recording system. This is the annual cost associated with maintenance for this system. And I'll point out that it is required by law that we gather and retain recordings in our communications center. So again, these are recordings associated with 911 calls, our non-emergency lines, and then also all of the police radio traffic is, is recorded with this system. Moving along, the next one is software maintenance. This is to cover anticipated cost increases associated with the software, much of the software that the police department utilizes. Industry standards seem to be that most of the software we utilize does tend to increase annually. So this is to, to help with those costs. The next one is the Emergency Response Unit Safety Equipment Program. This is the SWAT team essentially. This funding will allow for us to cover costs associated with replacing equipment. We have been very dependent on grant funding for this. And these items include ballistic vests, helmets, safety gear, things that we know have a very specific wear-out period. This allows for us to program those costs. And, and again, it's, it's over the course of time. We'll replace them as, as opposed to doing it all at once. We have found that the grants that we had been using previously to, to support this are becoming more and more restrictive. And this will allow for us to, to budget for these needed items long term. The next one is Net Motion. Now, this is required software on all of our, our police computers and systems that access criminal justice information. So we need, you know, this to, to support some of the new police cars, the new mobile data terminals that we're putting into those, those cars. And then this funding is also going to allow for us to expand the program into using cell phones. We've been really trying for, for quite some time to, to get to a point where we can use cell phones for, for such things as doing warrants checks, you know, doing, checking their calls for service on their cellphone and even writing tickets. So this is not just covering, you know, the increases that we see, but also it's going to allow for us to expand, and we're pretty excited about First two. First two is a map-based software that is essentially used to gather information in a, in a single search engine rather than making several different searches. And this is being utilized by our detectives. It's being utilized by our SWAT team. And it primarily allows us to, to search open source data, but it has been a, a time saver and it provides valuable information to them. So it's, it's being widely used throughout the department. The next one is SWAT medic equipment costs. Now, we have been working very closely with the fire department to improve our current SWAT medic program. This funding is to cover safety equipment for additional medics that we will be, or we expecting to add into this program. And I'm, I'm certain that the fire department will, will talk about this a little closer. But, but the focus here is really to use more on-duty medics. And so again, this is to, to provide them the needed safety equipment that they have as members of the SWAT team. Next one is Vesta Analytics. Vesta is the software that we use for call, call handling within our, our comm center. So we want to add some additional functionality to that. That's going to be adding the analytic portion of it. And this is going to provide the ability for, you know, to, to pull performance reports, times of, of calls, those sorts of things. It also assists us in determining what our staff needs are inside the comm center. And, and then one added layer is that we can also evaluate staff performance in that system. The next one is Schedule Express Replacement. So Schedule Express is our current scheduling software, and it has reached end of life. So this funding will provide the necessary money to replace this software. And we are working directly with IT and others to evaluate what that software will be. But we expect that we will no longer be using Schedule Express. 911 Services Upfront Costs. So as the council previously approved, this is to provide the upfront costs associated with our changeover from Maricopa Regional 911 to Arizona State 911. These funded, these funds will be reimbursed by the Arizona Department of Administration via a grant funding process. So we've already switched over and so far, it's been, it's been great. SWAT medic overtime costs. This is actually money that is coming from the police department, and we're, we're transitioning that back to the fire department. This was to cover overtime costs that, that we had. But now, as we're enhancing that program, they're going to handle it over on the fireside. And again, they'll probably talk a little bit more about that. The last one there is to move our account specialists. We recently were notified that due to some rule changes, we can no longer support our Special Investigations Account Specialist through RICO. So this will move the position into the General Fund because it is a, a much-needed position. It's not something that we could allow to, to go away. And then finally, those are, the, the first two there are the, the grant positions that I've already spoke about. The first one is the, the COPS Grant Match, the Forensic Specialist. Those are, are grant funding used to support those funds. And then the last one is the one that I just referred to, that Account Specialist moving from RICO to General Fund.
Thank you, Mayor. You covered most of what I was going to ask, so good for you. But I still am going to ask about the Flock cameras. Are they going to be covered as budget indicated for two cameras this coming fiscal year?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, so the Flock cameras, we pay for those out of a grant. And what our intention was, was to move our existing cameras from the grant into General Fund and add more. Because the sup was not recommended, we have continued with the grant on six cameras, and then we plan on adding eight through that grant process. So we're not getting the full 18, but we are getting very close.
And we're talking about Flock?
Yes, ma'am.
Or just, okay. To start, got your foot in the door, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, and I need further clarification.
I don't understand what you're talking about when you're moving RICO versus General Fund.
Where's your microphone? That turned off somehow. Your microphone got turned off somehow.
Oh, it did. It's on.
Okay. Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I did hear the question. Why, why are we moving from RICO to General Fund?
Yeah.
There's new rules with RICO. There's constant rule changes with RICO. It's a very sensitive topic in law enforcement and, and politics. And a new rule change came out that you cannot pay the salary of the employee through your RICO accounts. We need the employee, so we're making it a General Fund employee instead of being paid for out of RICO.
Okay, that's good enough. I don't need a further explanation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've got quite a few questions. You're, you requested two, two more specialists for the Real-Time Crime Center that were not approved. How many people were, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out by looking at your FTE schedule. I don't, I don't, they must be classified under something else. I under something else. I only found, I think, two people. I know there's more people in the Real Time Crime Center than that. How many people, Police Real Time Crime Center Specialist, yeah, it shows two on your FTE schedule. How many people are actually staffing that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, we have a sergeant, we have two sworn, two civilian, and one temporarily assigned.
Okay, so that's...
And then in addition to that, we have crime specialists in there.
All right. And is it staffed 24 hours a day? Or I guess you don't want to probably say those kind of things out loud, so never mind, you can tell me later. I just realized that was a dumb question. I mean, I think that the Real Time Crime Center has been so successful, I would be supportive of whatever staffing is required to do what we need to do there if, in order to better serve the public and solve more crimes, especially by keeping, and I think it keeps our officers safe, too. It's another thing I really appreciate about the Real Time Crime Center, is that somebody's got eyes, you know, overviewing a case. You can see what's happening, and they can tell the officers, you know, where people are and things like that. So I don't know if there'd be a consensus to reconsider that, but I want to, I'll move on. What is a civilian CID investigator? What is that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, that is a non-sworn investigator. It's something that we're seeing in our profession.
Is it like the C, because I thought we had CSOs, but I don't see them on here.
No, this is, consider it a detective.
Oh, okay.
But they're not a sworn detective. In most cases, it's retired police officers or detectives, and they come back in a civilian role. So...
And just work cases?
They can work cases, they just can't make the arrest.
Okay. It seems like a pretty inexpensive way to move cases forward. I'm gonna keep going. I'm mostly, obviously, I'm focusing on things that weren't approved. Detention cameras. It was a one-time request. Do, we have detention cameras, but do we not have enough surveillance? Is this, I would imagine this is in our jail?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, it is in our jail. They are at end of life, and we are working on funding this budget year to make that happen. If not, it'll be next foot, next year.
So are you going to be able to use other funding to address that?
Yes.
Okay. And then the Flock cameras, I had that also outlined. For $54,000, would we, we'd be able to have an additional 10 cameras? Is that, you said you were able to get eight, but you had wanted 18? Did I capture that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, we weren't asking for a full 18. We were trying to move some of our Flock cameras out of the grant into general fund so that we could open up some room for other stuff in the grant. So we're, we still have the six, we added eight. So we're short four.
Okay, so...
Of our original ask.
So $54,000 would have purchased four more cameras?
We pay on a yearly cycle, so every year, you're paying for the camera.
So are you able to have the cameras that you feel that you need and fund it within your budget without this supplemental being approved?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, we're fine with this. We can slowly build up to where we want to be.
Okay. I mean, it's a, it's a very cheap way to have surveillance out in the community where we, where we don't have patrol. I mean, I just, and I have, I know you, maybe not everybody's aware, but we've got HOAs moving in this direction, too, starting to put cameras. I know we're working on a policy because it's a new thing, but I mean, this is, this is going to be a big part of the future, I think, of policing, is having eyes on vehicles and being able, there's been a couple of arrests already made in one neighborhood in my, in my district because of the Flock cameras. So one of them was an armed carjacking in Las Vegas, and for whatever reason, the people drove into a neighborhood and fell asleep in the car, and they were able to identify the car quickly and arrest both people. So I mean, this is a very inexpensive way to, I think, address crime. So I'm very supportive of whatever we need as far as Flock cameras. I'm going to keep going because I want to make sure we can cover these things within your budget. Sniper rifles, are you at $68,000 for sniper rifles? Are you able to address that within your budget without the supplemental?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, yes.
Okay. The bomb, the robot, the bomb squad robot, that's a kind of a bigger, that's a bigger number, $260,000. Are you, are you able to address that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, yes, we are. We're not able to take delivery, so that'll be a carryover, but we were able to find the money.
Okay. And then the last one, additional drone licenses. How many, how many people do we have that are able to fly the PD drones that are licensed?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, I'm not sure on the number of people we have. I believe we have 33 drones. Some people share drones, so we might have more licensed people. These are licenses for us to use them with our, our system back at the Real Time Crime Center. So you have to pay a licensing fee per drone.
Oh, okay. And so are you able to absorb that into your budget as well?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, yes.
$10,000. Okay. So I wanted one more question. This, are we using the CSOs? Are they, are they called something else? Because I don't see them listed here. I know we had the, you look puzzled. We, I know that we, I think we had five. I don't know if some of the council members remember. They basically were, the idea was they're non-sworn, the officer goes out to the accident, and then somebody can come and fill out all the paperwork so the patrol officer can go back on patrol. And usually, they were mostly retired PD, but they would fill out the accident report and clear the scene because of, and get the patrol officer back in his car and back out on patrol. Are we no longer using them?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, sorry for the confusion. We are, we call them Traffic Safety Specialists now, TSSs. CSO is Crime Scene Officer, and now we've got our Crime Scene Specialists that will be doing crime scene work and also taking reports, criminal reports. If an officer isn't needed to be there, if it's safe to do so, the TSSs are still in place, and they're taking the accident reports.
Okay. So yeah, so the traffic safety, I just have my finger on it. Traffic Safety Specialists is what we originally were calling the CSOs. And then the, the one you just mentioned, because I know at the time, CSOs were also, if there was a burglary and nobody happened, somebody comes home and basically just, they just need to fill out a report and take information, non-sworn can do that as well. So we, that's how that's being addressed.
Mayor, Councilman Tomachov, Councilmember Tomachov, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry for all the questions.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will come back. I'd ask everybody to be back here by 15 minutes till 1:00. So it's about a half hour from now. With that, recess for
Is in that response time, when we talk about turnout time, from the time our men and women are alerted in the fire station when the light bar goes off, to the time they get out on the truck and push en route on the computer, that's the only human element we can really control with attitude and effort. We don't ask them to drive faster or break laws. We ask them to stay with inside a policy. But best practice is a minute for EMS and a minute 20 for fire. And to see us coming down seven seconds after the past year is a concerted effort. We put a lot of focus in talking about turnout times. And to see that, I just want to make, make sure we see that we are coming down in our times. Specifically on that page, if you come down a little bit, and we talk a lot about auto aid received, auto aid given. We did see an increase in the amount of auto aid we received this past year, and we saw a slight reduction in auto aid given. To give you the why, we reviewed the nature codes, those types of incidents that are assigned to our specific apparatus of what they respond to. And we found some, some nature codes assigned to our Battalion 152 that were from a different generation, a different era. Our focus was to keep our command and control inside the city more often, so we changed those nature codes. And in turn, you see the reduction in auto aid given. Training, when you talk about the big prevent, prepare, respond, and recover inside of kind of our, our cycle of emergency delivery, training is a focus. It is also one of the areas of scoring in an ISO rating, Insurance Services Office, and we are ISO 1. And since my arrival, we've asked our training division to ramp it up. Really put a focus in our minimum company standards, our quarterly training and part of code. I'm expected to have a training plan and a training policy, and we're working on that. So we're meeting and exceeding the expectations in our training delivery. Next slide, we're going to point out the performance gap in, in our improved resource communication, improved stakeholder engagement. Specifically, last year, our Community Education Director, Dr. Boeburg, retired, good for her. We took that opportunity to review the services we are providing. We worked with HR to do a reclassification, a class in comp and market. We finally got that reclassified to a Community Risk Reduction Manager. We've been out to market, we've done our interviews. Myself and Assistant Chief Gary Benson, on Tuesday, will select from our final two candidates, and we'll have somebody back in office. But what I do want you to know, that if a request came through, we were able to meet those requests from our community to come out and provide education or training as needed. But you will see these numbers ramp back up to kind of pre-2024 when we have our person back in place. Next slide, we talk about prevention. We spend a lot of our time talking about, obviously, the core business, the core service 911 delivery out on the streets to our community citizens and residents. But back at house, our prevention services are also a lifeblood, working with Randy and Don and bringing kind of construction to life, getting them through the permitting processing, getting them through their inspections, and getting our doors open to ensure that we kind of support commerce. This is where we see, and we're seeing a return kind of post-pandemic to some of those numbers of how many inspections we're doing, new construction inspections when the cranes are up, that's a good thing for the community, and our inspectors are very busy. I do want to point out that, just for context, when you talk about our Prevention Bureau, and when we're doing infill and growing a community, that once they're open and they're operating as a business, the fire department owns those buildings for the life of it. We have our annual inspection program, we'll talk a little bit more lately or later, but I just want to make sure the context of we own those for the life of the building. When we get into accomplishments, a lot of words up there for you to read, but I want to kind of give you the theme of what we were talking about in our accomplishments this year. Specifically, it was infrastructure, whether it was fire station raise and rebuilds, getting the appropriate type of decontamination equipment in the station, our fire apparatus beginning replacement, updating some of the apparatus that are out there. Again, the tools that our men and women use to serve the community, we were putting a lot of emphasis in that infrastructure. In addition, we have talked a lot about how do we improve our technology. Since I've got here, we've worked very closely with Pharaohs and his team in looking at best practice software to bring in. We have moved and consolidated kind of our records management system into the image trend to not only record what are called our incident reports for National Fire Incident Reporting System, NIMFERS, but also our electronic patient care reporting. And the fire marshal is now using this software. So we have consolidated all of our records management systems. I'm going to do a, a reach back to earlier in the day with Councilmember Tomachov, talked about opportunity and partnerships, and give a shout out to Lynette Pampa, our Crisis Response Program Manager. I think this really meets your interest, Councilmember, about partnering with the community in our colleges, allowing folks that are looking to advance their degrees out in the public sector to come and provide a value-added service to our community. And we've been doing this for quite some time, and I know you are very familiar with our Crisis Response Program. But Lynette and her team, and the two Saras, and the partnerships with the colleges, to get folks their social science degree time on our crisis response is invaluable. You see the number of dispatches we went to and how we log our hours and kind of estimated when you do, how much does volunteer time give back to the city? About 860,000. In addition, and I'll ask for your grace on kind of that third bullet from the bottom when it said Super Bowl, that's supposed to be Final Four. As you know, we are a mega event hub. We put a lot of time in the planning and preparation, and then the staffing, again, that city inside of a city, so we don't disrupt our traditional 911 services. And again, I felt very comfortable with, as we ramp up to Final Four, that we are prepared and ready to deliver services. The final, the final third page, again, in themes, a while back, the Glendale Fire Department brought in what is our Heavy Rescue Using Urban Area Strategic Initiative Grants, UASI. This past year, with the storms and the flooding in California, Arizona, they were requested by a statewide mutual aid agreement, and we deployed our Heavy Rescue with Phoenix to go serve not only Arizona but California. In addition, we talked about the opportunity for prevention in our Community Risk Reduction Manager will be coming on board here in the next couple of weeks, and taking back kind of the prevention and code enforcement for the State Farm Arena and being onsite and being a good partner to a major area of event for us. So supplementals, we'll get into those. Thank you for allowing us to provide these to you today and the notes in front of you. So again, I think the awesomeness of the Rattlers coming to Glendale, we had to do our, what is our potential spending plan to staff up when they are having home games, the $34,000. But this is a revenue offset that we will do a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement to either the promoter or the program manager. Second, the GFD Policy and Procedure Development. Again, this is a software working closely with IT, best practices. We have a lot of general orders and policies inside the fire department that need a little bit better in their templating. How do you bring them forward? Again, contemporary, professional, modern fire department, this is a guide and a software that helps us get it back to kind of what would be best practice. MOU outreach program, section five point one five, there's a an appropriation of five thousand dollars to support their outreach program. Where we see that most often with our represented group four ninety three is in our cadet program. The eighteen to twenty four year old looking to activate their interest in the fire department, in the fire department. So most of those dollars we see supporting our cadet program. GFD records management image trend, again, earlier in our accomplishments, we were consolidating our records management system. We've got it all in one place. The additional funding is to support what we call Data Mart, which is again, how we pull our analytics. Again, working with Pharaohs and his team and Christian of how do you take what the data is coming in? It's all a star schema, but how do you get all that in best practice? That dollar is to help support the data end of image trend. Computer aided dispatch fees, this is our partnership with Phoenix Regional Dispatch Center to dispatch our apparatus out into the community. You see the two hundred thousand dollar ask, you know, cost, you know, market cost increase for that service. But again, a revenue recovery of approximately one hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars that we will bill Maricopa, and we will get that money back as part of that process. Regional wireless cooperative increases to the Glendale Fire Department, again, every time we turn on a radio, whether it's in the fire truck or the handheld, it connects into the world of the frequencies and the radios. There's a market cost increase to that. We have about two hundred and eighty units, if you will, the types of radios that have to touch that system, so a market increase of forty six thousand dollars. Recruitments and promotions, I was here a couple of months ago talking about council item of special interest, and we talked about the realities of scheduled and unscheduled attrition. We're seeing that right now. This has been unfunded in our in past years. So this is the ability to intentionally put on sequenced recruitments and hirings to match the realities of our attrition. Advanced life support, special weapons and tactics, SWAT medic training, you heard PD talk about this. To give you perspective, this is kind of the medical overwatch for our law enforcement officers when they are serving high-risk wards. We are part of their deployment in addition to our threat liaison officer, TLOs. But this is program dollars to support overtime and training. New FTE fire department inspector in our fire marshal's office, we've worked hard over the last couple of years to flatten out that structure. We've reclassified, reclassified a vacant assistant fire marshal. We're in the process of looking at the other vacant assistant fire marshal. This is again to kind of grow out what would be workers out on the street, doing the code complying inspections, supporting our new construction and getting our businesses open. So this is someone out on the street working. There we go. The inspector vehicle, that's three thousand dollars in shop charges. The actual vehicle is in field operations budget. As again, as we've moved away from kind of a former model to this model, this was a car. These employees, fire inspector one, fire inspector twos are out on construction sites. They need a truck to move around those construction sites. The the car is not the best option, so that's what this is for, and those are the M and O charges. Firefighter physicals, I'm excited about this one. I really believe this meets your interests and the interest of ongoing and a holistic approach to wellness for our firefighters. At the end of April, you'll see in an agenda, the opportunity for a linking agreement. This provides more opportunity of an à la carte kind of menu style of our occupational cancer testing, cardiac disease testing, PTSD testing. Again, a little bit more contemporary than what you would see in kind of the modern fire service, and this is to increase the opportunity to provide a more holistic approach to our wellness program. Knox key secure system, if you think about the reality of our fire trucks have either a physical key or an electronic key that allows us into the private business at any hour of the day. The new Knox key system allows for a kind of a cloud-based electronic access. IT is putting the bulk of that dollars into theirs. Phoenix is ahead of the system, ahead of the curve on the electronic Knox key. We're not there yet, but we go in and out of their their city so often, we can't get into some of those buildings. So not only the Knox key secure system, this is the three thousand dollars for M and O. Professional development, you see this as an MOU item. Again, this is intentional. Again, if we look at the unscheduled scheduled attrition institutional knowledge leaving, this has been an unfunded area in our department. This is looking to, again, our folks have been great about going out and using the benefits within the city and also their own, their own time and money to get professional development. This is our opportunity to put that program together, put a sequencing together, whether it's conferences, in-state, out-of-state, industry standards, but get our men and women exposed at kind of the conference level, national best practice. And again, I think we have a lot to offer our industry, and getting our folks out in front is important. New FTE fire captain, this is a return to a past practice in the city of Glendale with two employees assigned to the represented group on a day assignment as a direct report into my office. One of those is very focused on the external relationships. The second one would be focused on the internal relationships of the membership. Very quickly closing communication gaps, bringing things forward to my office. Again, they are direct reports to me in my office. But at the end of the day, it would be a promotion in the current workforce, but we would hire a new firefighter that would be out on the street delivering service. SWAT medic OT costs, I believe this is our transfer in from PD that Chief Brant spoke about earlier. So this is again, programmatic dollars to support overtime and training. In their budget, you saw about the SWAT equipment. That is specific to wanting to stay consistent and best practices out of PD on what they know from equipping our men and women in the fire department to be in those high-risk ward, that they would help us take care of the equipment. We'll take care of the programmatic dollars for training and overtime costs. Finally, the emergency management budget, this is just to indicate the five hundred and fifty one thousand dollars transfer out of my budget in into emergency management as spoken to earlier. The final two, specific to the grip stick, forklift, we've talked about before. That is a working property down there, our sixty three acres, working hard every day. The equipment we have in there is coming to end of life and is is undersized. This is also some new dollars plus a carryover from fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Line supplies, just the cost of doing business down there, market adjustments we've seen from wood to everything in between. Again, this is just for our logistics. And and for this group to understand that there is a percentage for all of our partners down. Obviously, we're at the seventy four point eight, we're the the highest percentage. But surprise, Peoria, Avondale, and the Maricopa County College District all have a percentage that they are responsible for down at the grip stick. That's what I got for you. I got, I'm here with Liz to answer any of your questions or any granular questions you have for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Better put my glasses on so I can read my notes. On page one eighty five, Fire Services Division, Fire Operations. You have a total budget of a little over seventy seven million dollars. What, and this is just a comment, what I would like to say, since eighty percent of the calls are medical. If you look at the numbers that you gave for two thousand and twenty four, thirty one, nine, sixty two were ALS and BLS calls and three thousand and eighty were fire calls. I would like to see this budget reflect what you're paying for medical operations and then what you're paying for fire operations. It's something you haven't done before, but I would like you to consider that. Um, my other comment refers to automatic aid, my favorite topic. We received six thousand one hundred and fifty trips of automatic aid, and we gave out, no, I'll revise that, those are target. Six thousand one hundred and sixty three in two thousand and twenty four received, and we gave out eight thousand five hundred and four. That's an imbalance of over two thousand calls. I don't know what each one of those trips costs us, but I think conservatively, I think you could easily save five hundred dollars per call. If you include the wear and tear on the truck, the fuel, the personnel that you have to provide. I would say, I don't know what the cost is, but I would think that the cost is considerable. We're giving free aid, and yes, we're getting aid back, but they don't match. Glendale is always over in the range of two thousand calls that we're paying for and our taxpayers are paying for. And I know it's under the automatic aid agreement. And I know that the Valley Fire Chiefs put in there a special resolution that automatic aid shall never be reimbursed. But I think at some point, I would like to see Glendale where somebody take the lead on dealing with this issue with all the Valley Fire Chiefs regarding automatic aid. There has to be a way to reimburse a city that is giving far more than it's getting. And I know in some instances, like Goodyear, I think we get more from Goodyear than we give to Goodyear. Well, I'd be willing to pay Goodyear for that overage. I think it's fair. So again, my issue remains automatic aid and the imbalance that we see every year. And I think it's time we looked at the budget and showed how much we're devoting to fire calls, which are eighty percent of the calls of the department these days versus the fire calls and other miscellaneous calls. And my one question is, is Cade, okay, CAD dispatch a supplemental item every year? Or do you have it as a line item every year? And this is just an overage for this year.
Mayor, members of council, council member Clark, it's a line item for us. Every year, we get invoiced quarterly, that final quarter is in arrears, so we we are always kind of chasing that one, but it is in our budget.
So that's an overage at two hundred thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
Is more than the line item that we annually stick in the budget. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question, and I asked a question last year, but you were new last year, so I might, I might. And in fiscal year, in our, in our twenty three, twenty four, or twenty two, twenty three budget, there were, I think, fourteen FTEs requested for to staff MRU units, and then I, last year, when I saw they weren't, when we were told they were going to be doing the research and pulling the data to figure out where and when to deploy those MRUs. And then last year, when I saw they weren't in the budget, I said, I asked the question, why weren't they in the budget? And I was told that we were, you were changing the model from forty hours to fifty two hours on the MRUs. So I'm asking, and I don't see any additional staffing, is the fifty two hour achieving the the outcome that we were hoping for? And reducing overtime and providing, as we know, you know, response to medical calls, which is, you know, a large part of what we're responding to?
Mayor, members of council, council member Tomachov, I want to make sure I heard your question correctly. So the LAs and the MRs still work a peak time ten hours per day. The personnel that had been assigned to those units in a forty hour capacity, we redeployed into a fifty two hour assignment. In essence, to take the twenty eighty hours that they would provide us to a twenty seven hour, twenty seven hundred hours to provide those hours out in the world. And then the net would either provide those folks unassigned that day to be assigned to a peak time, or we're using overtime to staff the low acuties and MRs. I am confident that between the changes of reassigning those folks back into fifty two hour, plus the day staff assignments at headquarters, we in essence sent nineteen of our employees back into the fifty two hour workforce, which was about fifty thousand hours we infused there. I would say that in addition to the support we're getting for some early hire, our wellness coordinator, we're slowing down some of the overtime trending. I think we're too early to tell. We have an academy that's going to graduate here in about a month. The RTOs will come back out, those folks will come out. We saw some glimpses of having days without any overtime use, and then we sent some folks to paramedic school, and we have the realities of injuries in our workforce. I'm confident that the infusion of hours into the fifty two hour workforce and then our men and women using overtime as an opportunity is working. But I think we need more time and see some of the early hire strategies play out here in the next six months to a year.
Okay, thank you for that. Mayor, if I could, so we were under the impression, two budget cycles ago, that we were going to be deploying additional MRU resources out into the community, and at the time, we were told that they were needed and that they, that, but we were waiting to see. So as it stands right now, I believe we have two, two MRU units deployed, that's it, right? And they work out a one fifty four, one fifty eight?
Mayor, members of council, council member Tomachov, we have two low acuties, staffed with two employees each, and two medical response units staffed with four people each on a constant staffing base. When we redeployed the folks, we were, each unit was up four days a week, ten hours a day for the forty hour work week. You provided some new FTEs last year to get that to seven days a week. So we are in the more hours of service being provided now than we were last year based on that. We have not added an additional MRU or LA. We have stayed fast with what you provided earlier and what I was given when I got here.
Okay, so, but when I guess what I'm getting at is, we were told two years ago, and I understand it was under different leadership, that we were insufficient in the number of MRUs, the high acuity response that we had deployed out in the community. So are we no longer short, I mean, do we no longer need more assets out in the community? Or is it a budget constraint, or what exactly is it? Because I'm, you know, I mean, most of the calls are medical. And I know, you know, we have issues of running, you know, running, you know, outside of our jurisdiction as that's how automatic aid works. But what what I want to know is, are we still needing more resources for high acuity responses out in the community? And that it's just maybe doesn't work with this budget cycle, but it's still something that we need.
Mayor, members of council, council member Tomachov, I don't want to get the cart too far ahead of the horse, knowing that our consultant's going to bring back a lot of that granular data of what we're seeing as unit hour utilization for our low acuties and for our medical response units. I'm confident that with what we have out in the field today, we're going to respond to the nine one one emergencies that our men and women have. I can't speak to the the decisions prior to me getting here as to what they were bringing forward. I I take a a very mindful approach to the safety of the community and the conservative approach from the fiscal responsibility. I would, I would offer, if if my team felt we needed to bring more to you, you would have seen that this year. You've supported us with early hires and the opportunity to train more paramedics, that's what our focus is right now.
Okay, and and I'm not insinuating that you you wouldn't ask for it if you needed it, because we've got the list of supplementals requested. But I'm just trying to understand, because we were told two years ago that we were going to get additional data so we would be able to know, understand where and when the resources were needed, and then it it just went away. So I guess that that was, that was delivered, that message is delivered by a deputy city manager. I guess at some point, that that was shifted over to the consultant now that's going to be bringing that information to us at some point this year?
Mayor, members of council, council member Tomachov, similar to my March of twenty three presentation when we were speaking to incidents outside of Polygon, where would you need additional if you're looking to growth versus infill? Again, when we look at the number of incidents we're running, response time, outcomes, the assets you have provided us are meeting the performance measures we set. We look at the data all the time specifically to unit hour utilization and how often are they being used on a daily basis? The triggers we look for are, are they outpacing the, or are they being outpaced by the volume? And today, we are, we are keeping track. Now, is that post pandemic? Is this a different time? Has the the request for need changed post pandemic? I think we could quantify if we did a regression analysis, but I think you're going to see a pretty comprehensive report of of what's been going on the last eighteen months.
Okay, all right, very good. I just wanted to get a good understanding of that. I just wanted to get a good understanding of that. I do have one more question, Mayor. What is the, what does the community risk reduction program manager do? Is that a new position? I don't see it under supplemental. So is it just a reclassification, or what is that?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Tomachov, yes, it is a reclassification of a vacancy we had in April of twenty-three, when Dr. Boeburg retired. This program, when we talk about the industry standard of community risk reduction and the five Es of engineering, education, enforcement, emergency response, and economic incentivize or de-incentivize, is a more holistic approach than what has been traditional community education, maybe just focused on getting into the schools or just getting into the communities. It's a more holistic approach of risk analysis and risk assessment for your community, and that's what this person will bring.
So if I could ask a question, Mayor, will this person still be available to go out into the community and talk to people about, you know, CPR and water safety and those kinds of things also in addition to the more holistic approach? Because I know, I know Dr. Boeburg was very good at that. And I've had several people even ask me, when are you going to bring her back out to a meeting? Because she did a really good job of showing people how to use, you know, the, I forget what the heart things are called, but whatever those things are called. She was really, really good with the public. And I think those are important connections still to have, so.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Tomachov, absolutely, that's one of the five Es is education. Between this person, those programs are still alive and well. Fire Pals is still in our back pocket. Just the shifting priorities and getting this position reclassed, getting it filled, getting it out to market, doing all the work we needed to, we're here today. So that person will, literally, I'm interviewing the two finalists on Tuesday with Assistant Chief Benson. We should probably have somebody in office by the end of April, early May, and then we'll be up and running, just like we were before. But with additional value-added services, I think we're going to bring to market out of the Fire Department.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. One follow-up question, when we're talking about ALS and low, you know, medical service. Can you get from me, of the thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two calls last year, how many were handled or were responded to by either a low-acuity or a high-acuity unit? Because presumably, whatever they didn't cover was covered by a big fire truck. And that's going to tell me more than anything else if we need more medical response units. So I would appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Innovation and Technology, presented by Pharaohs.
Good afternoon, Mayor and the Council. I am pleased to be here to present to you our FY twenty-five budget and also share with you our accomplishments from FY twenty-four. Just a quick overview of our department. Our budget for FY twenty-five is thirty-three point five million, forty-nine FTEs for divisions, telephone technology maintenance, technology operation, and project management. The purpose of this department is to enable rest of the city and all the employees to deliver the services to our citizens through scalable, safe, innovative technology solutions that we can deploy and use throughout the city. A quick breakdown of our budget. So twenty-five percent salary, sixty-five percent operating, and ten percent is our internal services. That rounds it out to thirty-three point five million. Some KPIs. As we have shared previously, this year is no different. All of them are in high nineties, SLAs, single resolutions, so no reopen tickets, customer satisfaction, and we continue to maintain that high ninety and plan to do so in FY twenty-five. Replacement of our computers this coming year, it's going to be eight hundred and one. I can quickly give you the breakdown of what that eight hundred and one comprises of. Four hundred and twenty-one desktop, two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty laptop, hundred and forty-three iPads, one Mac, and six Android tablets. Next, we're going to talk about what have we done lately. So in FY twenty-four, before I get into our accomplishment, I think it's important to note, tone at the top matters. Your support is the result why we are able to deliver these accomplishments. The dynamic leadership from City Manager's Office. My peers and department leaders who collaborate with us in almost all the projects, and you will see some of the examples of upcoming projects and the work that we have done. That combination is essential for our success. And ever since I've been here, that has been the constant. So happy to report, we continue to maintain a very successful streak of delivering strategic technology initiatives for the city. So number one here is GIs Center of Excellence. We won Nvidia international competition. If you follow the news item, Nvidia is the company that drives the AI revolution. It covers eighty-five percent of the market as far as AI is concerned. They launched a competition, they do this every year. Last year, we participated, and we were the only winner in that area. And our GIs Center of Excellence was the winner of that. How do we use this technology? We can use this for planning, policy development, and many other aspects of running an urban operation through our GIS tools and technologies. So we were the first one. And not only we won the competition by delivering a unique solution, but what we contributed as part of the project was something that will become part of their product offering. So we delivered and received the recognition, but we contributed to the industry at large. Next one is generative AI. So there are many different permutations. The first one is also an AI example. The second one is generative AI. So if you follow again media and you talk about ChatGPT, this is an example. We're the first city in Arizona to have a fully functional implemented generative AI solution. It was delivered last September on the twentieth. The technology emerged and came to forefront December of twenty-twenty-two. So it took us six months to understand the technology, understand the application of the technology, and then launch a successful initiative and deliver it in a span of less than a year. And that's through our internal resources and close collaboration with our partners. And the implementation of this solution is growing. We have our HR department working with us closely. So we will leverage this technology in many different areas. The next award is our application development team. They won this year, this past year's North Star Outstanding Customer Service Award. Again, the award is one thing. You have to look at what was delivered. A large company that delivers a technology solution wasn't able to figure out some of the technical challenges they were experiencing. Our team, peer Glendale's team, was able to figure that out and deliver that solution. And that was recognized by the peer community that was attending the conference. So it's a recognition worthy of paying attention in terms of how we delivered it. Next, we started this work leading up to last year's Super Bowl, followed by Swift City, and then now, just around the corner, Final Four. We delivered about twelve projects related to major event and then need for technology for those events. And those were all delivered. And what we built for Super Bowl was leveraged in the subsequent events, and it's going to be leveraged in this coming weekend's events also. Next, we come to downtown campus reinvestment. I've highlighted three major categories of work that we have done. There were about twenty-one different departments or teams within the City Hall that we had to, together with facilities and engineering, relocate them to different satellite locations. We successfully delivered that, and all those satellite locations were activated. That means technology connectivity, everything was enabled. So when they walk into the office and get to their desk, they are able to perform the same way they were able to perform when they were previously in City Hall. One of the major initiative that was part of this effort was the documents that we maintained within the City Hall. We needed to relocate those documents to a safe temporary location. We needed to have a capability so that we can scan on demand and make those document available to continue our business operation. So we worked with City Clerk's Office closely through their guidance. And with a vendor partner, we were able to do that successfully. And those are stored now at an off-site location. Last one was, in order for the work to continue, we needed to move our fiber installation that was within the City Hall out of the City Hall so that it can continue with the construction. We were able to do that also successfully. Next is Modern Data Platform. So again, the theme goes back to, themes goes, goes back to AI and data and data-driven organization. So when we talk about AI, data is a key component. We started this journey a few years ago. And this is, again, that strategic investment we made through your support and guidance that is paying dividend now. We presented to Mayor and the Council a few months ago, our launch of Modern Data Platform. Since then, and it was asked during those presentations, is this only for finance? We have delivered solution for facilities, for fire, for HR. So many different departments are benefiting from this solution. And this solution continues to grow. This work was recognized for Smart City Award. We were the finalist. Our GIs Center of Excellence, along with that, was finalist also. And in a prior presentation, Nicole Munson mentioned that we implemented emergency notification system. Even that project was recognized and was a finalist in the Smart City Award. So multiple initiatives that are getting industry recognition as part of our technology endeavors. We can build technology, implement technology, but if we do not build resiliency, we are one disaster away from being completely out of connectivity, out of capacity to deliver services to our citizen. So continuity of operation becomes critical in this case. We have since I have joined, instituted the practice of annual continuity of operation exercise for technology team. These tier-one applications that we identify that are critical to our operation are tested through a regimented exercise. Lessons learned and remediations are applied as we go through. So we do this every year. We've done it last year, we plan to do it again this year. Next is Zero Trust Architecture. This is a recommendation from CISA, a part of Department of Homeland Security. They deal with cybersecurity. That organizations, institutions, local government, they should implement this architecture of managing cybersecurity. It's called Zero Trust Architecture. It is a combination of people, process, and technology. We are implementing it, and there are several different initiative under this that are currently undergoing. But the architecture is in place. Every year since I started, we started this annual summit. So when I talked about that, this is a collaborative exercise. When I talk about the dynamic leadership from the City Manager's Office or my peers coming together during this summit, talking to us, sharing with each other and their counterparts in different departments, what are some of the business challenges and problems we want to solve? And how do we solve leveraging technology? So we do this every year, this exercise. It allows us to understand where the needs are and how do we align our capabilities and capacities to deliver maximum value. After that, we have two programs, and we've talked about it in prior budget presentations. Security cameras, we are about eighty-five percent done. Five hundred and forty-eight cameras have been installed throughout the city at various facilities. Access control has started out of eighty-eight. We have twenty-two sites with new access control modules being deployed. And we will continue to do the same for the rest of the facilities. So as Coach K would say, next play. So what is our next play? Which is our next year's projects that we plan to undertake or start. There are several, they are part of your presentation. I will go through some of them to just give you a quick perspective of type and nature of the work that we plan to undertake next year. Court hearing and recording system. This is something that is required by the judicial code of State of Arizona. So we have to deliver this for the court so that they stay compliant. Another one that comes to mind here, which is listed, public housing management software replacement. This is a twenty-five-year-old system. We are in the age of AI and generative AI. This is a legacy technology by all definitions. So this is the right time to undertake this endeavor and identify a new, more reliable, capable modern system that can help our community development department. Police data aggregation software. There are unique need in terms of police data and public safety data. This solution will allow us to provide that data through external sources that are predefined, developed, and pipelined in terms of dashboards and reports. So we'll deliver that, that would enhance our capability in terms of how we operate. Few other ones that are kind of important to note here. ERP planning and replacement for our ERP system and citywide website planning. The reason why I bring these two up is, these are actually planning exercises that we want to undertake. And the reason why we want to do this, because these are citywide initiatives with broad-based impact to everybody who uses these resources. And we want to be careful in terms of our strategy and our choice of tools and implementation of those solutions. So we want to undertake this planning exercise this year so that we are ready. Why now? These systems are more than five years old. The technology, in technology terms, is becoming a legacy technology. And before it becomes out of support solutions, we want to make sure that we plan ahead, tee it upright, and then get into the implementation when the timing is right. Compensation classification management platform is another one that has a high impact. So our HR department performs these comp and class studies. This becomes annual or semi-annual exercise. In this day and age of real-time information, having this kind of system allows us to be nimble, to respond and react to the market need and changing demand for talent. So this will allow them to do that and do it effectively in terms of managing our talent. Fleet management system is another one that I would highlight here. This is, again, a system that is essential. We have a system in place currently, again, due to the age. It is fast approaching its limits and several different audit committee meetings. We had some observation where the capabilities were lacking within the system. So we will try and implement a newer system with modern capabilities. This will allow us to effectively manage our fleet from utilization perspective. And in companion to that is our motor pool reservation system, which allows us to then identify resources, motor pool resources that are available in different departments that can be effectively utilized if they're not being utilized in a given department for a period of time. So these two systems give us a better management capability of. So these two systems give us a better management capability of our resources. I'm going to leave the rest because we've talked about those in various different presentation. Chief Freeberg talked about knockspots. Chief Briggs talked about scheduling system. So all of those are part of our portfolio of projects that we would be delivering in coming year. So now we come to our supplementals. So we have about eight supplementals here for this coming year. Number one is our enterprise application supervisor position. This is a new FTE we are requesting. Today, our application development team is managed by one enterprise application development manager, which means that there is no management capacity. If the person is out sick or on vacation, that team is self-managed or somebody else from other department is overseeing. It also helps us with succession planning. So we're requesting an application supervisor, which would work with application manager to manage the department. It also addresses our need from the growth perspective. As our technology footprint is growing, more applications are being added, new applications are being added. This will allow us to manage them effectively throughout. Next one is a reclass. We have a cybersecurity engineer. It's been with us for some time and we are reclassing to cybersecurity manager, followed by cybersecurity specialist. Again, cybersecurity is a highly demanding field and highly in-demand field in both cases. So we have a resource that came through our internship program. Earlier, we talked about it. Within IT, we have an internship program also and we brought in college students and university students last year. And out of the batch of four, two stayed on with us and one of them is in the cybersecurity area. So we plan to continue with that resource and turn it into a full-time position as a specialist. Next to our reclass, GIS analyst. We're moving one analyst to a security, GIS software engineer position because the work is more on the development side of it and other to senior analyst position. The next item is temporary staffing. So this number remains flat, same as last year. City Manager Phillips talked about staffing during the opening presentation. So this is that project-based contingent staffing. This allows us that agility in terms of delivering solutions. So we can bring in right resource for the type of the project and the nature of the work that needs to be performed through this model as opposed to bringing FTEs. Next one is our system administrator specialist. Again, this is another position that came to us through our internship program and we want to move this into a permanent role. So this is a similar kind of situation as our cybersecurity specialist. Last one, and the biggest one, is software maintenance. Earlier, when we were listening to Don Bessler's presentation, we talked about how the cost has gone up across the board in various different areas. Technology is no different. Various different parts of our technology ecosystem has seen significant jump, partly because the cost has gone up and other reason being, we are adding new technology to our portfolio. So for example, from a cost going up perspective, we were on a three-year price lock with Microsoft that ended. So the new pricing has gone up. So you see a significant shift there. Clarity dimensions, identity management, all these technologies are new technologies that we are adding. So that adds to the cost. Monitor platform, we do this incremental development and build out of this platform so that continues forward. So those are some of the examples of why you see this number here. With that, we come to the end of this presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I have, let's see, I'm trying to find it. On slide one nineteen, where you say the number of computers replaced per year, the target for fiscal year 2025 is eight hundred and one.
Yes.
So I was trying to match that up with the dollar amount. Is that the technology expense on page two oh seven in the budget book? Is that what that is?
Allow me a moment to get to that.
Sure.
So would you give me the page number one more time, please?
Two oh seven?
Two oh seven.
It's under technology projects.
So, thank you. So two oh seven is technology projects. This replacement would come from our technology maintenance fund, which is two oh six.
But I don't see a budget increase there for the additional almost four hundred and sixty devices.
There should not be a significant increase simply because it's on a replacement schedule. So these devices we do, and as you can see at different points in time in prior years, we have replaced those. And that replacement schedule is not a linear schedule in a sense that we don't replace hundred devices every year. It's based on the age and when they're due for replacement. So you see a different schedule. The only difference here in FY twenty-five is that not only we are looking at desktop, which we need to replace, we're looking at some laptops. And then on top of that, we've added iPads because those are also being used, so they are due for replacement. So that's what constitute this eight oh one number. But it's going to come out of our technology maintenance fund as opposed to project.
And then, okay, and so you probably have carryover also from, because it said fiscal year or the estimate, well, twenty twenty-four budget was one point seven million and fiscal year twenty twenty-five request is one point four million. Would it be under equipment? Is that, I would think that would be under equipment. But the request is lower for more devices. That's why I was just trying to match it up. And then my other question is, are the desktops, is that for city, moving back into City Hall? Or where are the desktops going?
So I'll have Amy answer the first part of the question and then I can answer the laptop and desktop.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomalchov, there's an annual budget that we do as part of the internal charges that you see in each of the budget books that goes to the department. There's an allocation that's based on a calculation that we do every year. The replacement fund of devices is part of that internal service fund. So while the number of devices that are being replaced annually may fluctuate, that's where that charge goes. It helps to, it pays the replacement costs of replacing older devices.
By, for the department that it's going to?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, yeah, because I couldn't match it up anywhere. And so are the, is the plan to, I mean, when are, City Hall is supposed to be done somewhere by the end of twenty twenty-five? So we're, and it was a large number of desktops. Are those for replacement desktops for City Hall?
So you may remember from prior years' conversation, the idea towards moving from desktop to laptop is to build in that mobility. So should need arises and we need to be mobile, you can be mobile. But the function, the functioning of that laptop, the type of laptop you will have is going to be same as what a desktop can do. So that's, that's why that move is taking place. But that's not in all cases. There may be situations where desktop is needed and we'll provide those. So that's kind of what it is. And it's not tied necessarily to the City Hall. It's our maintenance schedule in terms of replacing older hardware with a newer hardware that is compatible with new software and new technology that we are using. So that's kind of how it works. But it's not directly tied into the City Hall development or anything.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know why anybody want a desktop anymore anyway. I mean, I, you know, I mean, I know some people, my husband, he still likes the desktop, but I haven't, I haven't had a desktop. I never, I've been here ten years and I really never use my desktop because I'd rather just pick my laptop up and take it with me. So I was just curious because the number seemed high, but that includes updating the existing laptops with, okay, all right, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Jesse Peterson with Economic Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll make sure that's one. Okay. I'm happy to be here on behalf of the Economic Development Department, which has grown since our last budget presentation last year. As you know, this has been our first year that we've welcomed the Special Events Division as well as the Tourism Division to join Economic Development and Arts and Culture. These are all very diverse divisions with a lot of different functions, everything including overseeing our arts and culture collection and programming, managing our city's tourism strategy, leading our business attraction and retention, as well as planning and facilitating city special events citywide. And then there's a lot of functions in between, including the team back there that's making sure our audio and visual is working. That also lands in our department. And the joint efforts of these divisions, it's been exciting to lead over the last year as we have brought all of these together to really manage that synergy that we were looking for to improve the lives of the people we serve because quality of life is absolutely vital to our economic strategy. So I'll move through the next few slides that highlight some of our performance metrics across those divisions, including business attraction, job facilitation, and technical assistance to our small business community. We've started to track some of these a little bit differently as we're trying to maintain both our balanced scorecard and really look to make sure that our measures are meaningful, specifically on that one-on-one technical assistance hours for our small businesses. We've started to track that a little bit differently with some of the contracted partners that this council has supported us to bring onboard with us to make sure that we have measures associated with those assistance hours that are being provided to our small businesses to really see outcomes associated with that. On this next slide, you'll see this is our strategic objective to improve purposeful communication. So bringing on all of those divisions has also required us to really enhance how we communicate and specifically to be telling our story even more, to not be a best-kept secret because that's not helpful in our business. And so this slide shows that continued growth in our media outreach across all of the accounts, specifically social accounts that are held within Economic Development. So that includes Grow Glendale as well as the Visit Glendale accounts. On this slide, business retention and expansion is a super vital function to economic development. Well, it's really exciting to be able to bring business attraction projects forward and announce new businesses. Really, B R N E is very, very vital to making sure that those businesses that have selected Glendale stay happy, remain here, and we help them grow. And so we continue to grow our business retention and expansion visits specifically to make sure we're doing that. We also continue to see steady growth in our gross hotel room sales and occupancy along with those additional hospitality assets that were previously mentioned. We can, we expect to continue to see that nominally grow over time. So that's where you see both that increase in hotel occupancy conservatively as well as in those gross hotel room sales year over year. And then on this slide, this is showing the tracking we've been doing for attendance specifically at our city-produced and funded special events, as well as showing what the volume is that's quite high relative to the amount of special event applications for private events that have been approved year over year. And all of those applications are reviewed and processed through our special events team as well. So moving into our accomplishment slides, this slide highlights some of the attraction and expansion projects this year. I want to note that this isn't all of them. This also shows some that have chosen Glendale this year, so those were announcements, as well as some that have opened this year. And then same with those expansion and retention highlights of just some key ones that took place this year that many of you are very aware of. As I was putting together this slide, I realized several that already didn't make it on this slide that certainly year over year will continue to talk about, including the downtown hotel that was brought up. And then just this week, Bell Bank that came to downtown Glendale has done a soft opening and will soon have a grand opening as well. On this slide, this is our tourism highlights. So this is showing the hard work that our tourism division has been doing this year and to show how hard they've been working, specifically in the middle there where it says Glendale was featured in Frommers Best Places to Go in twenty twenty-four. That's really highlighting how hard that team has worked with a readership of over a million. Glendale got highlighted as one of the best places for tourists to come in twenty twenty-four along with some pretty awesome folks next to it, Brisbane, Australia, the Cook Islands. And so that's what that team has been working hard on. Special events highlights, as this council knows, we have had to pivot this, this year on the special events specifically here in downtown, but we still kicked off the thirtieth anniversary of Glendale Glitters and we saw over a hundred and fifty thousand visitors come to downtown during that period of time. And then the live series continues with a shift in both the format and the location in downtown. And I want to give a huge shout out and a ton of credit to the special events team specifically for being incredibly adaptable as we've continued to have to be nimble to respond to the downtown campus reinvestment project. And I've appreciated their ability to continue putting on great events for this community. And then our arts and culture highlights there. You'll see under that section, the Arts and Culture Master Plan specifically. I know it's very important to all of you. Councilmember Clark does not let me forget just how important that Arts and Culture Master Plan is. And we've made significant progress this year, including community engagement that took place. We will be bringing that plan forward to council for both a workshop and hopefully for full adoption by the end of this current fiscal year. And then last but not least, a few of the department enhancements, including the Grow Glendale Hub that we officially launched in January. That's a business support platform that's specifically tailored for our small businesses. We've had a lot of great feedback already with that, that platform. And then Placer AI. What I think most are often pretty familiar with, with Placer AI is that's how we've been using data-driven techniques to be able to look at what our attendance is at our special events. But it also provides really, really key valuable information to both our business and hospitality clients to be able to make decisions on both demographics, how people are operating, how long they're staying at places. And we've seen them using that for both marketing, site selection, as well as operational decisions. So into our asks, I'll just walk through this list very quickly. The first, the first one on there is the increase to the Greater Phoenix Economic Council membership contract. This is an annual contract that each of us as cities here in the valley participate with GPEC. That contract increases generally every year and it's done so by per capita. So when our population grows, so does the increase to that membership contract. That event patron attendance tracking software, that is for Placer AI. We were able to find some savings in the budget to implement that software during this current fiscal year to continue utilizing Placer AI. That would build that into our budget. That's the same for the hub, the small business support platform that I previously addressed on the last slide. The DCRP Downtown Business Support Plan. In October, I presented to council what our economic development strategy was to support downtown during the construction phase of that project. At that time, we included promotion and marketing specifically for downtown and that was at a cost of fifty thousand dollars per year. CVB Tahoma Autumn Tourism Grant, that's a two percent increase to the tourism grant year over year. We're in, I believe, our eleventh year of that grant and that funds specifically marketing and promotion for CVB to continue doing their great work. And that final one under the general fund there is the Tourism Investment Fund. So what that ask would be, it would specifically come from Bed Tax. So what that ask would be, it would specifically come from bed tax. And that would, that type of fund is something that other communities use quite frequently, and it's an attraction tool. And so what it would essentially establish would be a fund that would be designed to attract large-scale events or experiential opportunities that would generate economic impact for the community, and that would be a requirement to be able to use that fund. This fund is a common tool for us to be competitive, and it would also work in tandem with our partners, most specifically in the Sports and Entertainment District. When large entertainment events are looking at communities and determining where they're going to go, those are most often, they require some level of funding from communities. And this would allow us to be able to utilize bed tax to do that, to start that type of fund, and again, would require an economic value associated, very similar to how we do attraction and economic development. And that would essentially be to generate more revenue to our bed tax. So that is what that ask is. And then that final one under the Arts Commission is an increase to the Arts Community Activity Fund that would come from the Municipal Arts Fund. By ordinance, the Arts Commission every year has to provide a recommended arts plan to this council. This is how they're, how we do that. And they have asked for an additional $133,000 to be added specifically to the Community Activity Fund to be able to do additional programming, which also includes providing funding that would allow us to start implementing activities in that arts master plan that we expect to be ready for implementation beginning FY '25. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just one question, thank you, Mayor. In the budget book on page 181, under Tourism, Tourism Division, professional services increases from the $485,000 range to $787,000 range. What is the cause of that 62% increase?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I believe that's the $300,000 Tourism Fund supplemental.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that, an add-on that I'd like to discuss and bring forward to council in this, and it may be shared with other functions such as intergovernmental affairs. When I was on the Econ Development Committee with MAG, one of the things that we discussed and was involved with was the Sister City Project, basically, where we have sister-city relationships. And we've been looking possibly of having a relationship with a sister city in Mexico, but there's others around the world that we currently have sister-city relationships. I also discovered that years ago, the city of Glendale actually funded, or had some funds set aside for this, for Sister City. And I'm not sure how that money was used, but I would like to propose that we set aside a small amount of money for Sister City to be used by the city of Glendale for creating an opportunity, for example, an event when we have a sister-city group come visit us, that we have some monies available to create an event that we can sit down as councils together, discuss what we have in common. I also wanted to briefly read to you what, when President Eisenhower created Sister City Project back in 1956, and he said at the time that he envisioned an organization that would be the hub of peace and prosperity for creating bonds between people from different cities around the world. And in light of the increasing conflict and political conflicts that we're having today, I think it's even more important to create those bridges across the world for friendships and collaborations. And what would we get out of promoting this a little bit more? Obviously, we have a nonprofit that is the Sister City Organization, and they raise funds and they promote it, and they have functions, et cetera. What this, I'm proposing is that we set aside some money to, again, have an event here in the city that the city would take care of, that we would then be able to invite the community. We could make sure we showplace the city of Glendale to our visiting council, let them see our culture, how we do economic development, how we do our education, how we develop our downtown, and let them in turn provide to us that kind of exchange as well, and ask them to be prepared to do that when they come here. But as you know, anything that we're going to do is going to cost some money, whether it's in staff time or event time, creating, you know, some catering or whatever we need to do, there's going to be some expense. And so that's what I would propose to council, that we do that as a city. I would recommend a $10,000 initial budget. Again, we may or may not have some city come over during the 24 or 25, 24, 25 budget year, but we, I know in '26, there's, there's, there's planning to be a delegation come in '26. So if we don't use the money in one year, I'd like to see it be part of the budget that it actually roll over into the following year and that the staff department that has given this opportunity, whether it's economic development to be part of it, whether it's intergovernmental relations, that we all kind of come together and create this event. And again, we can discuss if there's other ways we can use this money, but that's kind of my initial thought. I'd like to see what council thinks about it.
Mayor, I support the concept. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I can support the concept. I want to make sure that we do it in a manner that doesn't usurp the activity or the role of the Glendale Sister Cities Group, the nonprofit that is active now, but we do it more in a way of supporting them or augmenting what they're doing. I don't know what group you were thinking might be coming in 2025, but in 20, yeah, sorry, '26, but I know that, I believe that the group from our Sister City in Memmingen, Germany is interested in coming over at that time, and that will be, that Sister City connection got created in 1976, which was our bicentennial year, and '26 will be 250 years, and that seemed like a good time to have them come over and, and mark the occasion and enjoy whatever festivities we might have available here in celebration of that. So I think it's a good thing for us to be planning for. So I'm good with it.
Mayor? I can support the concept, but when it comes to the actual expenditure, I'd like to see council approval. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, just to clarify, I do anticipate or envision this being a collaborative effort with our nonprofit organization. Obviously, they would have to be involved. It's not something that we just do on our own, but we would, it'd be a collaborative effort, that we would bear the burden of the expense for that particular event that we'd bring together.
Question.
I do have a question. Are we moving on from that, that topic? I just don't want to, I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, I think I'm finished with that. If we have, I don't know if this is the proper time to have a consensus to at least put it as an added line item.
She noted it already.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I just want to get a little bit under better understanding for this Tourism Investment Fund because it's showing as professional services. And is this, I mean, I, like, we bought a sponsorship to Super Bowl, we purchased a sponsorship to the Final Four, so professional services indicates to me that it's not staff time or it's, we're going to be paying, paying some kind of consultant or something? So I just want to get a better understanding of what this concept is.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, that is a little bit confusing in the limited number of lines. So a lot of what the C V B does lands under professional services that aren't just contracted just because they're lump sums. And so what that would actually be, if this was broken out in a little more detail, would be specifically coming from the bed tax, and it would be a fund that if we knew there was an attraction, so, you know, you all are aware, you know, and familiar with Dale Adams over at the arena as an example, he will often hear leads for lots of large opportunities that could come to the city, and there's usually a funding element to that in order to attract them. If there was going to be an ask or an opportunity, more often than not, the type of funding that would come out of the tourism fund would actually come before council because it would be a large enough expense to do so. We would have to show you what we believe that estimated economic impact would be. We would use a third party to do that, as we always have with economic analysis, and then be able to acknowledge if the council supports money coming from that fund that would support a large event coming to the city that would therefore attract, again, more than what we're paying out essentially. So it's not a contracted service, it's actually a fund that allows us to be able to incentivize opportunities coming to the city.
Okay, so I'm glad I asked that. So Mayor, if I could, so, and I know that sometimes our arena management company, who also manages State Farm Stadium, which is not, not our building, but they offer incentives to promoters and things like that. You're, you're suggesting that we, now we do that in addition to them, or?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, it would be in partnership with some of the very large opportunities. So what we can share is that there have been opportunities that if we as a city don't participate in some form or fashion, don't necessarily happen. So, well, it is very similar to a sponsorship, and we, as the C V B and as the city have provided sponsorships for very large opportunities or things that we know already put a significant amount of heads in beds, which is our charge on the C V B side as well, or bring significant dollars on the tourism side. It would allow us the opportunity to be more strategic in getting experiential entertainment and those types of options here.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, so this is something I have been asking the C V B to consider doing. So let me kind of give you an example of that. So we get a call, say, from the Renaissance Hotel who's trying to book a major conference. And we know from looking at the number of rooms that that conference will, you know, will generate and how much bed tax. So let's just say that they want to generate 1,000 room nights, and that 1,000 room nights will generate, I'm just making numbers up, will generate $25,000 in bed tax. What this fund would allow them to do to compete for that book of business, as long as it's less than 25,000, we could maybe offset cost of rental of the convention center to get that book of business here in Glendale. So it's, it's always designed to be a return on investment. That's why we kind of refer to it as an investment fund, but it allows us to be more competitive sometimes because it is a very competitive market with the different facilities, especially in the convention and conference center side. So this just creates a fund, and the ideal part, if we expend $100,000 to, to create a book of business, that the net revenue coming back in direct sale, in, in direct hotel tax would exceed that amount.
Okay, so, so would it also be used for what she, what she was suggesting was to, like, for, for example, when Taylor Swift came, would we have, would we have worked with the stadium and the promoters in, in order to, I mean, or I'm just not sure I understand like in what circumstances? And for example, with Vi Resort trying to book entertainment and book, they don't have really very much conference space, but would be, and that also kind of directly competes with the city-owned building that we already have. So I just want to make, I just want to understand, it's a new concept for me, so I just want to make sure I understand it.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, you, we likely wouldn't use it for something like Taylor Swift or a large event. What we find, again, when you talk to the sales people at the hotels that are trying to book events and book them for Glendale, is you may get a promoter that's in charge of the conference that says, can you help us out with airport transportation? Because it's, it's a, because of the gap of getting from the airport to Glendale's different than getting from here, say, to Tempe. So it would just be designed on a case-by-case basis that they would come and have the ability to say, we think we can attract this block of business, it will generate this much in direct hotel overnight stays, and, and this is what we want to contribute to help, you know, make ourselves competitive and move us up to the top of the list for the booking. But something like Taylor Swift, no, it's not really designed for those kind of large meg events.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to drill down a little bit into the special events portion of your, your department. I realize it's new to you and, and even a quick study like you, it takes some time to get familiar with everything, so. But even in our binders, I'd like to have more, more drilled-down data, you know? What are the events that are financed in your budget that we consider the special events? What, but what the budget that's set aside for those? What's the attendance that we get from them? I noticed that you included in the accomplishments, you know, some, some very good things, including the Taco Wars that produced over 3,300 attendees. That was kind of a, I would say, an outlier for that series of events. And, and it was privately produced by Taco Wars, and that may have been part of why we had such a big turnout for it. But I think that for the council to be able to actually determine, you know, these things, you know, what's working, what isn't from our point of view, that we need that data, what are the events? I don't know, we talked earlier today about the, the Christmas Parade. I don't know if those numbers are included in here, if that's, is part of our special events program or anything. As was mentioned, there have to be, you know, the city does have expenses for it, and our residents and our council, we need to know what those expenses are and where they're allocated in the budget so people can refer to them. And not unlike the fund that we were just talking about for the, our Convention and Visitors Bureau to be able to assist in attracting conferences to Glendale, I think it would be helpful to have a fund in the Special Events Department where when we have outside events wanting to come in, that there may be ways in which if we had some money to help on specific things, that would make it more likely for them to actually bring their event to Glendale as a special event and to make it more successful. So it might be some money in which we could assist, your department could assist with portageons, for instance, or barricades, or things like that that maybe aren't the mainstream of what that promoter or that event's about, but that we deal with all the time and may even have in-house, could even have onsite in a slightly different location that we could utilize for that and have some money that if, same kind of a concept, if a promoter is asking, how can you help us, you know, or can you help us in a way that makes the event more doable, and then brings that 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 people to downtown or Westgate or Zora Ranch or wherever, then we can help and cooperate, be cooperative with them. So I think that the return on that kind of an investment would be, would be good, and if the other council members see the value to that, I'd like to see it included in your budget request.
So Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I'll address a few of those questions, and then if that's a discussion that the council needs to have regarding additional funding for that. I think the first question was about a breakdown of specifically those events that are city events and then the attendance. I am able to provide that, I can provide that detail to, to council. To be very clear, the Hometown Christmas Parade is not one of those city events. I mean, to answer a couple of the questions that came up before, the Hometown Christmas Parade always happens during that same period of time that is Glendale Glitters, as that full month of December. And so for street sweeping specifically, street sweeping happens two times a week on schedule already in downtown. That schedule is simply adjusted by the night that it gets done when that event happens. That's also something that we acknowledge for when Glitters is happening in general, so it isn't an added expense. And then the additional piece to that, the Hometown Christmas Parade operates like any other privately-produced event in downtown, which means they have to get their own barricade company, they do their own barricades. There, we do have a downtown fee waiver for events, and so the parade has been able to utilize that for some of those transportation fees that any other event that takes place that's free and open to the public in downtown as well. The only hard cost that has been absorbed in the past, from my understanding, has been P D costs, and moving forward, we've already acknowledged the conversation to be had with the producer moving forward to ensure that, again, if there's going to be a fund or some type of sponsorship for events specifically in downtown, but anywhere else, that we would have to be accommodating to that versus the city paying for those. that we would have to be accommodating to that versus the city paying for those. But looking at that whole event, it isn't treated differently from street sweeping, sanitation, pickup of trash. All of that is handled in the same schedule we would during any other large event that's happening in December. To move into the question about the, like, say, the Taco Wars, for instance, that's an absolute great example of how we're trying to facilitate with the current budget that we have. So live, the live concert series is part of our city-produced events. And by being able to couple that event at the same time, allowed us to reduce what that would have been a cost to that event to have, you know, portageons, to be able to bring the element of the music, to bring fencing, to bring all of the things that were already set up for that event. And so that was a great partnership. And I give a ton of credit to our team for looking at ways to try to do those things together to help facilitate more events, so that we can manage those, what those costs could be for a privately-produced event, because we certainly see the value and benefit of more events as well. I hope that answers some of the questions.
I'm still digesting. But, so I think I heard that, yes, in the future, to the extent that there's expenses funded by the taxpayer for the parade or other events like that, they'll be accounted for, and we'll have the transparency that's necessary to be able to see that. And again, not a knock on the Christmas Parade, just a, you know, another torch for transparency. And then for having some money so that your department can be helpful and fill a gap to help bring something to downtown Glendale that might otherwise end up somewhere else, I don't know what a reasonable part of your budget, you know, what we should add to your budget to be able to accomplish that if it's a, you know, I don't know, maybe you can help me, is $20,000 too much? Or is it right in the ballpark?
So Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I do just want to acknowledge that putting on special events, especially individually for a producer, is expensive. It's expensive for us as a city. And so what I want to make sure is that we're thoughtful about what that amount could be, so that it is useful as to what it's used for, and that it's being utilized to attract, again, quality event production in downtown or anywhere in the city, depending on how a program like that would work. So if I can, I'd like the opportunity to be able to put a little more thought in that. Maybe it's an item that comes back either on Thursday or in the future, if that would be okay with council.
I would much rather have a thoughtful number than, than a not thoughtful number. So, yeah. And again, I, you know, it takes time to think that through, so that would I yield the floor, Mayor.
No questions. Thank you. Okay, last one.
Our last presentation today is Ms. Bowers with the City Clerk's office.
Thank you. Mayor and council, I am the last presentation, so I will make it quick. I'm gonna jump right ahead to my ask. We are asking for $5,000 for boards and commissions for the annual dinner, just to upgrade it and make it more memorable each year for our board and commission members, you know, based on the fact that they contribute their time and efforts to the city. Otherwise, the rest of my budget would remain the same. Any questions? Thank you.
Five thousand?
Five full dollars.
Okay. No questions? I guess we're done. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's on move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
You bet.
You run an office. Can you reach her? I never.